Save our corps. 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 Save our corps.
Excuse me.
Save our corps. Save our corps. Save our corps. Save our corps. Save our corps.
Good evening, thank you so much. Welcome to all of our Da Vinci students and parents who are here tonight. We can see you and hear you and we appreciate you being here and just want to remind you that we are trying to carry on the business of the district and disrupting the meeting is disorderly conduct. So please, please try and keep your comments and your... It is what it is. So please try and keep your... Please try and keep your... This is a volunteer. Please try and keep your chanting and comments to a place where we can still continue to carry on the meeting, that would be great. Also, I just wanted to mention that, and I see George over here helping us out, that the aisles need to remain clear by the fire code. Okay? So thank you so much. So this study session of the Board of Education for June 2nd is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. While our study sessions are generally limited to our receipt of information from staff and discussion of that information, and review of resolutions prior to a vote, at times we conduct votes during study sessions. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. The meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. One slight change to the agenda tonight, excuse me, we're going to begin with Agenda Item 2 and then hold public comment. So, with that, I think they're here somewhere, yeah? Okay. After three days of simulated congressional hearings on the U.S. Constitution and Bill of Rights, we are very proud to announce that our own Lincoln High School won first place in the national We the People competition. This achievement marks Lincoln's fifth win, making it the only school in the nation to win five national titles. So again, go Lincoln! Superintendent Smith, you have some comments?
Just that I'd like to introduce Peyton Chapman, who's the principal at Lincoln, and Jason Trombley, one of the coaches, to come on up and introduce the team. And what I'd like to say, I get to go to the airport and welcome this team back, and I've gotten to go pretty much every year to welcome a PPS team back, and it's been totally exciting. And the fact that we've won six national championships, five of them Lincoln, is just phenomenal. But part of what happens is getting off the plane, the entire team moves like it's one organism coming down, and it's like so tight and so awesome what this builds in the group of students who go and compete. And some of the toughest competition is here in the state of Oregon. And actually, I'm gonna just do a quick call out for Marilyn Cover, who is one of the champions and one of the people who's built this infrastructure. To have the level of preparation we have and the coaches who are part of this, oh my goodness, we have coaches who have been part of this since the beginning. They prepare for this every year, and it's just the kind of adult energy that goes into preparing our teams. Thank you to all of our coaches. So Stephen Griffith, I see you sitting there too, former school board member and like avid champion. With that, Peyton and Jason, will you come on up and introduce the team and our coaches?
Peyton? Good evening, Superintendent Smith and our school board and student representative, Mr. Davidson. Congratulations, you only have two days left of school, I think. I am the proudest principal. What principal gets to travel to DC with a state-winning Constitution team three times in her principalship? And to go twice and come home with national champions has just been phenomenal. And I sit here not just as the principal, but I'm so proud of our public school system. I'm so proud of Grant's team and Wilson's and Madison's and Franklin's and Lincoln's team, and that the state of Oregon has won this national title three years in a row. And we know we're a political state. So it's just really exciting to see our students reflect that passion for learning and for democracy and citizenship. And I really want to thank the Da Vinci students for being here today. I think they would make great Unit 5 team members because they really could talk about the right to petition and assemble and their free speech rights. And Allison Brody is a great coach on Unit 5 up here, so I want to thank her and our coaches too. But really, I joke, but I don't think any of us will be happy until we see a We the People program in every 5th grade classroom across our district, and a We the People program in every 8th grade classroom, because that scaffolding is so important. And I know that we have enough volunteer coaches. We have Spanish immersion students at Lincoln who go and teach in the new Spanish immersion elementary, K5s. They do that their senior year, one day every week, they go and teach in the elementary schools. And I know that our Constitution team champions could do the same thing. They could go into the elementary schools and they could work with 5th graders to establish We the People programs, and it would be a great way to foster and model that citizenship that they have demonstrated so beautifully. So I'm sure my time is up, but Jason Trombley has been a fantastic coach along with all of our other coaches. These coaches could be playing golf at 4 o'clock, they could be doing a lot of things, and they are at Lincoln every first period. They're at school Tuesday nights, now they're at school Thursday nights, bringing on the new 2014-15 team. And they meet on Sundays at Stoll Reeves, and they do weekend retreats, and these adults do amazing things. And I really want to call out Misha Isaac, who's a PPS alum, a Lincoln alum, who just presented the Oregon gay marriage case and was successful. And he's a Lincoln Constitution team coach who gives so much time to our kids. So we're just so proud of the whole program. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you to Marilyn and Barbara too, from the Classroom Law Project. And you'll hear from Jason, and then our fantastic student Sandra Hong and her older sister, who's also a national champion, Kendra Hong. And their parents are here too, and always so thankful, so I'm glad that you both can be here. Thank you so much for supporting this program.
So Superintendent Smith, members of the board, thank you so much for acknowledging the team's success from April tonight. As Peyton Chapman said, I am one of the 12 volunteer coaches who takes the time to work with students at Lincoln High School. And I think for me, one of the biggest takeaways is that this team, that is of 36 students, 30 of them are sophomores, who apply their spring semester of their freshman year only knowing a little bit about what the Constitution team program is, its tradition and what it does. So I think at the very onset, when we get through this whole process of interviewing them, they're really taking an intellectual risk. They're wanting to voluntarily say, "I want an academic challenge." This is a program that they know that can push them, and they're willing to say, "I'm ready. Push me as hard as you can to the best you've ever built," because they want to rise to that challenge. So I think with that, through that process, over the years, we've had anywhere from 65 kids to apply, to two years ago where we had 96. So I think what this tells me is that students across our school through all walks of life are interested in this kind of content, and the coaches have been so grateful to really figure out, how do we make this program accessible to every kid that walks through the building at Lincoln High School? So I think with that, it's been an honor and privilege to really work with these kids who really want to take on the role of active citizenship, who also learn that when they join Constitution team, possibly their sophomore year, that that's the first step in their learning process around how to be an active citizen. They learn the basics here at Lincoln at sophomore year, but they know that the learning isn't done. We have students who about five or six years ago started a nonprofit organization, a certified 501(c)(3), where students after-con team can actually go into immigrant communities and work with them to actually prepare them to take the U.S. Citizenship exam. It's a business, they design the curriculum, they design the schedule, they work with ESL teachers here at PPS to figure out, how do you best teach those families well? And they also do a program called We the Kids, which is actually working to get We the People program content in the hands of 5th graders. So what has been a unique joy and a pleasure, both as a coach and as an alumnus of the program, is that these kids want the challenge, they want to give back, they want to learn, they do their best, and they expect us to rise to the challenge and push them. So while it's an honor and privilege to coach them, I'm really grateful for them giving us the opportunity to work with such motivated teammates. And for now, I'll turn it over to one of our students from the 2014 team, Sandra Hong.
Hi. First, I want to thank you all for letting us be here today. It's such a privilege to be here. And also, from this whole Constitution team experience, I really learned so much. And in fact, I believe that the most important lesson that I learned is that anything is really possible as long as you really commit to it. I remember standing on the Lincoln Memorial after we won, and I realized that you could really achieve something great if you put 100% of your effort in it. I remember staying up late and thinking that maybe if I just read that one more chapter from a book by Monesky or Gordon Wood, maybe it would just make all that difference. And I think that it really did. And from there, it seems that almost anything is possible. However, this of course would not have been possible without the spectacular coaches that we were able to have, 12 of them actually. And also from the amazing support from our teacher, Mr. Tim Swineheart, our principal, Ms. Peyton Chapman, our families, alumni, volunteers, and to the amazing schools that we were able to compete with in states such as Grant, Franklin, and Loco Segua High School. And so overall, from this whole experience, I learned so many lifelong lessons, and I feel extremely privileged to be able to have this opportunity and be able to stand here tonight and be able to represent this. So I really hope that, I really know that this experience will be changing my life, and I am absolutely grateful and thankful for that. So thank you so much.
So I also had two sons who were on Constitution teams, and I can tell you, you're right, it is a life-changing experience, and I'm so happy that so many of our high schools now have Constitution team programs. And I hope that very soon, every one of our high schools will have programs, because they really are. And I also agree with Principal Chapman that we do need to articulate that down into the earlier grades. So thank you so much for all of you being here. I'd like to invite you, all of you, and the coaches and the teams to come, are we gonna line up on this side? And have our picture taken. How's that? Okay? Just right along the aisle, right there. Yep. Board members, yep. Or you can stay standing. Okay. At this time, we'll move on to our next agenda item after that wonderful opportunity to celebrate our students. Ms. Hewson, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do. We have six. Our first two speakers, Gunner Olson and Don Gavitt.
Great. While you two are coming up, I'll go ahead and read the instructions for public comment. Thank you very much for taking the time to come to our board meeting. We deeply appreciate public input, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. Guidelines for public comment emphasize respect and consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. The board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but board or staff will follow up on various issues that are raised. Please make sure that you've left your contact information with Ms. Hewson. Pursuant to Board Policy 1.70.012, speakers may offer objective criticisms of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel. Any complaints about specific employees should be directed to the superintendent's office and will not be heard in this forum. Okay, you have a total of three minutes. Please begin by stating your name, spelling your last name. During the first two minutes of your testimony, there'll be a green light in front of you. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will come on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound, and we ask that you wrap up your comments at that time. So thank you very much to both of you for being here tonight. You can go ahead.
Hello, my name is Gunner Olson, O-L-S-O-N. I'm a Da Vinci alumni and currently a junior in Grant High School. I'm here to talk about my experience with Core Class. I'm also dyslexic. I've known that I'm dyslexic since 3rd grade. It has been something I've struggled with my entire life. When I went to Da Vinci, I found that Core helps with my dyslexia. Having a teacher who knows who I am and knows that I'm dyslexic, it helps. Having that be the same teacher for three years, that helps. My teacher was Christie King. She got to know me over our time together, and she knew when I struggled and when I needed help. Even if I wasn't too keen on asking for it, she'd make sure that she helped me. Another great thing about Core Class is I had this great learning environment for not one class, but I had it for three. One of these classes was Language Arts, a class I consistently struggled with because of my dyslexia. Having Christie there to help me out, it really helped. When I entered Da Vinci, I was a tall, lanky toehead who struggled in school. When freshman year of high school rolled around, I was still tall, lanky, and a toehead, but I killed the class's freshman year. And having that experience in Core Class, I brought those resources with me, and it really helped me out. So if you cut Core Class, just remember all those tall, lanky toeheads with dyslexia that you're gonna be hurting. Dyslexics don't learn the same as everybody else, and neither should Da Vinci students. Thank you very much.
Hey, everybody. Hey, everybody, I'm Don Gavitt. That's G-A-V-I-T-T-E. I teach social studies at Grant High School, and I am a two-time Da Vinci dad as well. So I'm here with that hat on more than anything else, but the two go together. I'm not gonna argue for Da Vinci Core using data. Data concerning assessment, pedagogy, and methodology is notorious for its uncontrollable variables. And we can't even get into absolute truth. I teach philosophy, we'll be here all night if we start talking about absolute truth as a concept. But anyway, with that aside, John Dewey once said, "The truth is that which works." Da Vinci Middle School works. However it works, in many ways, the data points and spreadsheets can't capture. For example, Da Vinci students know that diversity is better than uniformity. Da Vinci students know that self-expression comes in many forms, and that it's usually beautiful and often powerful. Da Vinci students often consider themselves just that. Da Vinci students, well after 8th grade promotion, something any school would be proud of. It was, I felt that proud as a general here today, and I know Andrew did as well. I didn't know you guys were gonna flip and have Lincoln first, I would've been late. The, no, I'm joking. It's, but that ties in with what I want to say. When we take that off my seconds, the, when we truly look at the adolescent, not just data about adolescents, but the adolescent themselves, we see ourselves, warts and all. We also see the future. So I ask, I ask you guys this. I asked the board and Superintendent Smith this. What was your greatest, most pivotal educational moment in your life? Think about that, and also think, what was the moment in your life when you started feeling relatively comfortable in your own skin? The, and if that's not enough to think about, think about the moment you realized that no one was exactly like you and that you had much to offer the world. That's what happens in Da Vinci Core. That's how we get Constitution teams. The, that's how we get gold medal awards at Grant High School and the Colombian Student Press Association. It starts with being comfortable in your own skin, and that starts with the Core Model. The, let me just end with this. The, I ask you to consider reminding principals that these are the most important persons in a young, important moments in a young person's life, the, and that they rarely, if ever, are fostered by a higher test score. They are fostered by communities, modeled by adults, and engaged by young people. They are fostered by such things as Da Vinci Core. They are precious. They are not in need of reform. The, and with that, the, let us, please hear our plea to save Da Vinci Core, not as one school, but as a reminder of who we want to be as a city, more than a test score, more than a data entry point, more than we can ever imagine. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Next, we have Ruth Gibian and Sekai Edwards.
You can start any time. Okay. Ruth Gibian, G-I-B-I-A-N. If the purpose of the major structural changes proposed for Da Vinci Middle School are because of a need to elevate mathematics, let's consider why math matters. Math matters because, among other things, it teaches our students to learn and practice logical thinking, to be able to abstract and think ahead several steps, and to make decisions based on fact, not intuition. If this is what we want them to learn, let us lead by example. The proposed changes are not based on any of these principles. Rather, they are illogical, short-sighted, impulsive, and not in keeping with academic research. Please delay this decision and only take action that is well researched and well considered. Core teaches skills in planning, organization, time management, and help-seeking, all of which are necessary for success in math. Current pedagogical thinking suggests a trend towards a Core-type model. In middle school, because it is developmentally appropriate; in high school, because it decreases dropout rates; and in community colleges, including PCC, Lane, and Lynn Benton, because it increases math completion. I wish school administrators had to take an oath like doctors do: first do no harm. Continuing with this plan, which goes against what current research says are best practices, is akin to academic malpractice. There is also a puzzling and troubling lack of inquiry into the math dilemma. If my car broke down, I'd be foolish to race to my mechanic demanding a new head gasket before running any diagnostics, but this is exactly what's happening at Da Vinci. If the proposed changes are based on test scores, then why aren't the glaring validity and reliability issues of those scores being addressed? The Oakes tests have a 30% margin of error, terrible from a reliability point of view. And considering Oakes tests a valid measure when there has already been a curriculum change is poor science as well. If test scores started to go down three years after stellar performance by our school for many years, then why isn't there a systematic analysis of what has changed in those years? A change of curriculum without a matching change of measure? Introduction of block schedule? A new principle? Perhaps with the many changes throughout the PPS system? A change in the Da Vinci applicant pool, and therefore the demographic of the school? And if multiple changes continue to be implemented, there is no control, there is no way of knowing which factor is having an effect. Further, the results of this year's TELS survey for Da Vinci are disgraceful for a school formerly considered a jewel in the system and should sound a loud alarm because teaching and learning conditions are predictive of math achievement. Do the diagnostic before rebuilding the engine. Allow time for a team of parents, teachers, administrators, and students to give this problem the study it deserves. Thank you.
My name is Sekai Edwards, S-E-K-A-I-E-D-W-A-R-D-S. I graduated from Da Vinci Arts Middle School two years ago. In that time, I had the same Core Class for all three years. I excelled in reading, writing, and science, and all my standardized testing. But more importantly, I was able to make the transition from elementary school to middle school without losing the sense of community I had experienced from my entire education. I was pushed to work harder when I was in 6th grade with 8th graders, and when I was in 8th grade, to continue to be an influence to the 6th graders in my class. However, I understand that this board likes data. My 8th grade year, I was surrounded by incredibly talented group of students, but that data wasn't stored anywhere. Right along our test scores, there is no list of our accomplishments. Does your decision to follow standardized testing scores also show that in my graduating class, at only 16 years old, kids have gone on to do things such as Mikey Garcia, who's attending Juilliard Summer Program? Or Jacob Rutter, who's going to dance for the Dutch Royal Ballet at only 16 years old after studying with the Russian Kirov Ballet in Washington, D.C.? Every year in Core Class, we studied, rehearsed, annotated, and performed monologues. And even though I've studied in theater, it was this academic learning and understanding that led me to being able to go to Nationals for the August Wilson Monologue Competition and win a scholarship to study theater on Broadway this summer. However, when you open my file, all you will consider is the number from your precious, outdated, biased, and racially oppressive standardized tests. From the shaping of our creativity to our academic success, Core Class has not only been instrumental, but altogether imperative to the exemplary education that has come to be expected out of Da Vinci Arts Middle School. I beg of you that you consider that everything cannot be written down next to my name in three categories: almost meets, meets, and exceeds. Core Class is best described by its own name, Core. Please do not strip us of our core. I am not one of few, I am one of many, and so are my fellow artists and leaders. I urge you to push Mr. Locke to use wise judgment of what Da Vinci should be, and not with this new era of privatized, standardized thinking that is sweeping our nation and ruining our creativity, communities, and altogether our educational freedom. Thank you.
Lastly, we have Chris Wilhite and Dennis Phillips.
My son is a 6th grader at Da Vinci, and I've been following the proposed changes by the administration to the Core and daily schedules more recently because I just sort of found out about them recently. So I went to the PTSA meeting where Mr. Locke presented the presentation, and I understand the concern that folks have with the math test scores. If we truly have comparable data across many years and across the district and the state that shows a troubling downward trend in math and science scores, then we should all be concerned. But what struck me was what seems like a very Cartesian sort of knee-jerk response to the problem by the administration. So many scientific fields have abandoned this mechanical...
I'm Chris Willhite. It's W.I.L.H.I.T.E. My son is a sixth grader at Da Vinci, and I've been following the proposed changes by the administration to the Core and daily schedules, more recently because I just sort of found out about them recently. So I went to the PTSA meeting where Mr. Locke presented the presentation. And I understand the concern that folks have with the math test scores. If we truly have comparable data across many years and across the district and the state that shows a troubling downward trend in math and science scores, then we should all be concerned. But what struck me was what seems like a very Cartesian sort of knee-jerk response to the problem by the administration. So many scientific fields have abandoned this mechanical view of nature, this Cartesian view of nature, where if there's a deficiency, you simply add more of what's deficient. But human beings are not machines. We're not machines. We have to be holistic and inclusive about our approach to solving the problems. So at the PTSA meeting, a friend of mine made a really great point, which I hope wasn't missed, when she said that her son's difficulty with math was not going to be fixed with the 10 more minutes of math a day in class, but rather with the time in his Core periods where he can learn better organizational skills. And that's just the thing, right? The current format is what works. It's what makes Da Vinci what it is. If something was inherently wrong with the current schedule structure, then Da Vinci would have had troubling math scores all along, throughout its history. If there are real quantifiable problems that have recently surfaced, then let's work together to identify the cause. But the administration, in what seems like kind of a panic, seems like, because we only get these messages at the very end, has just jumped to this simplistic conclusion that we need to cut time from Core in order to make room for 10 minutes per day of math and science. So that's sort of like a leap of logic that's based on outdated assumptions. So I'm here, of course, joining with many others to ask the administration to keep the current schedule structure. It is what makes Da Vinci what it is, and it's what makes it successful. If the administration can truly, can use truly comparable data to exhibit a downward trend in math and science readiness, then it should take a more thoughtful and inclusive approach with a year-long process to propose and consider various options for Da Vinci with teachers and families of Da Vinci and a Broadway.
I'm not Dennis. He graciously gave me his time, and I do have a handout from him to give you afterwards. My name is Donna Cohen. I'm a former technology education instructor, and I have a master's in vocational education administration. Roosevelt is planning to have a STEM CTE program. There is no such thing as STEM CTE. CTE, Terminology of Career and Technical Education, was congressionally enacted to replace the terminology vocational education in 2006. CTE teachers are certified in one precise career field. STEM, on the other hand, is an interdisciplinary approach to the study of science, math, technology, and engineering, which prepares students for the next stage of career development, one or two years of community college or more, after which they can enter a job which is in demand and pays well. STEM is a great idea. Technology education, AKA technology engineering education, science and math principles inform, design, and creation, the engineering and technology parts of STEM. Roosevelt currently does not have a technology educator with an endorsement on staff or even advising the school. You don't hire scientists to teach science. You don't hire an engineer to teach technology education. You hire a technology educator. We have some great ones in Oregon. Connect with them, please. Technology engineering aspect of STEM requires knowledge of a very broad array of tools and techniques, as opposed to the more focused knowledge base of a vocational instructor. All STEM teachers, science, math, and technology engineering are on an equal footing. All tools and equipment used for project-based STEM work need to be adjacent visually and physically. The STEM workspace needs to accommodate traditional science tools and equipment, new high-tech equipment such as 3D printers, and conventional manufacturing, construction tools and equipment. Additionally, space for constructing projects, workbenches, and open areas for projects that don't fit on workbenches is necessary. If done right, STEM will increase interest among students who have traditionally seen themselves as not suited to science and math and increase the number of minority and female students in science and math. A good STEM program will keep kids in school longer and improve graduation rates. Do these things. Immediately connect with technology educators in Oregon for advice and consultation. Make sure the STEM space at Roosevelt is workable, which, in the current remodel plan, it is not. Hire technology teachers for STEM programs. The quality of STEM teachers and the workspace will make or break the program. Long range, Oregon needs to bring back a technology education program, like I went to at OSU, within one of its schools of education. And then I have some materials and a reference to curriculum of technology education teachers, and also a video about STEM, which is very informative. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you again for everybody. Please feel free to connect with Ms. Houston if you didn't, to give her your contact information if you want to be contacted later. So at this time, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is a comment from the Portland Association of Teachers. Per our contract with PAT, which allows time on the Board of Jennifer Common, I'd like to invite Gwen Sullivan, President of PAT, to testimony table to provide comments.
I got it.
I'm not seeing.
She's here.
Oh, there she is.
Save our Core. 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 Save our Core.
Whose Core are you in?
I'm an alum.
An alum? Whose Core were you in?
Nope. We need it more than I do. Thank you.
You didn't have a Core teacher?
Thanks.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Tonight, I actually, I don't have a speech. I just thought that I would give you a couple of updates, things to think about, things that we could be working on and doing a little bit different and maybe a little bit better. Last week, I saw the information about the TELS survey, and it was one that was in cooperation with COSA, OSBA, OEA. I can't remember if there's anybody else. You guys probably know that. And I think that it had some very eye-opening information. So I do, I'm not going to go too much into it, but I think that a lot of times we talk about data. We talk about certain report cards from the state based on certain criteria. But I also know, as a parent and a teacher, that the data in this TELS survey gives some pretty good information to figure out whether or not you would like your child at that particular school, or would you like to teach there. So just starting off with some of the TELS information, some of the questions, I think it's important to really look at. I think, first of all, it's important to look at the state information. And for the viewers that don't know what we're talking about, it's for all educators. We're encouraged to take this survey about their teaching, their professional development, teacher leadership, school leadership, a number of different things, facilities as well. And pretty much, except for in two areas, the state compared to Portland, we are, it seems like we're 10% lower than almost anyone in the state. And now, remember, those are averages. You put everybody in PPS together, right? But that's pretty eye-opening. As we look at some of the things that we think are pretty important to teaching and learning, some of the things that we look at is what school leadership is. And I think the thing that's really important, as a teacher, for how many years, I feel like I've been pretty fortunate that I've worked with some pretty great administrators. And just the simple question of the faculty and leadership have a shared vision. That means that you're going to go somewhere with your students. And when you're seeing that, in some cases, that there, 100% of the faculty say they don't have the same or a shared vision, that's a problem. And then, you know, the atmosphere of trust and mutual respect in a school, I mean, that's when you think about your kid going to a school, that that's, you know, that it's there. And when you see things pretty shocking, where it's, you know, 90% say no. They don't feel trust or mutual respect. That's not a place that I would want to necessarily send my own child. So I think as we take, there's so much data here. But I think as we take a look at some of these things, we've got to figure out how we're going to move forward, because I'm quite sure that we all are very aware that there are problems in our schools, and we definitely want to work on making them better. I think we really need to take a look at this and figure out what changes we need to make. There are some schools, I will say, that in the opposite, 90% say that they feel like there's trust and mutual respect. And even in other districts that have this, it's to find out, what are they doing to, in other districts and within our own, what are we doing to make sure that we can replicate that in the rest of our schools? So I want to figure out how we go, we look at this and move forward, because I think it's really, really important to figure out, on behalf of our kids, to make a better learning environment and teaching environment. Some of the other things, let me see, that I wanted to talk about, there's three basic things. One is the survey and to figure out what that means. There were some schools that didn't get the 50%, at least 50% of the staff didn't fill it out. Maybe we could figure out how we can replicate those same questions and have a way that they can participate to get more information. But then, another area is, we're starting to see, and I fully admit that I work in, being the president of Portland Association of Teachers, I get to see some of the negative things that come in. And we're trying to get to the bottom of some of the things that are happening, standardizing all of our schools in a way that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, where in the past, in kindergarten and in fifth grade, families would have little promotion ceremonies. And we're starting to see that that is no longer, it's being, they're being told, you can't have this. And it's not just at one school. It's happening more and more. And you know it's a problem when, as the president of the teachers, I'm getting calls from parents. I am. They're not happy with it, and they want to know if we can help. So I'm trying to figure out why we are trying to standardize when we know that Portland, we always talk about our uniqueness, and that's what separates us. And I think that a uniqueness is important as long as there's still a lot of opportunities for all of our kids. And then, going on that same vein, the standardizing, that seems as though in the middle schools that we are standardizing the six-period day versus a seven-period day. And I taught at West Sylvan Middle School for about 13 years. I was a language arts, social studies teacher, and that was a three-period class. And I would say that was really important, especially middle school, that's a little funky. Sorry for middle school schoolers here. I'm not trying to put you down or anything, but it's a funky age. And I think what's important to know about that is it's really nice to have a teacher, somebody that you have for three periods, that you feel comfortable with, that you can go to, and that is the place where we would teach about their agenda. And knowing, we would do binder checks, where we'd open up their binder and shake it, and if anything fell out, then we needed to look at organization. So those are the things that are lifelong skills that we also did besides language arts, social studies. So really looking at, why are we trying to standardize everything? And then the last thing, which is a really important thing, is last time I was up here, it was just after we ratified our contract agreement. And I think that initially, we had seen that there was a shared goal of having joint trainings around the contract, so we have less disputes. And to date, there isn't any. And there were some that were scheduled, and then they were canceled. And then now, it looks, we're hearing that there's a possibility that maybe in the fall, October, there might be some joint trainings. But it is so important to have those joint trainings, because as you can imagine how many disputes we already have. So I think we have to make sure that that's a priority, because a contract, a mutually-owned contract, is only as good as us putting it together. And then, I noticed tonight that you're going to be talking about discipline, and once again, we know there are issues in our schools. We have been asking, boy, I think it's for the last two years, about how we can look at discipline and get some information. Seeing the information, and I haven't been able to fully go through it, but in the board book tonight, there are many things that we could have been talking about, and there are many things, I guess, that aren't too surprising. But there's, what we're hearing in our office is that there are a lot of people that will turn in a referral, write a referral, and then they don't know if it's even been processed. They don't know what the follow-up is. It could be that it's in the computer, or maybe not. I don't know. And so we're trying to figure out a better system for follow-through on this, because we really want to make sure that when you have clear boundaries for students, that they actually feel safer, because they know where they are. And at the same time, look at those with, and we are very clear about this, understanding culture and the cultural practice that goes into those things. So trying to, I guess the biggest message I have is, can we really try to work together and not be against each other? I think there are opportunities to do things different, and once again, I'm open to do so. And I'll take any questions if...
Director Beal?
Any final questions tonight? Great. I would have a comment about the, do you, I'll ask my question after you, after I make this comment, and then I'll ask my question, which will be, do you agree with me? The, on section 7.3, one of the things they talked about is, are teachers, in the TELS survey, are teachers able to bring forth things without, basically without fear of retribution? And it seemed to me that that correlated well with the trust and respect when I've looked through that TELS survey. Is that the same that you found?
With, at least within the places that I've looked, because like I said, there's a lot of information to look at, yes, I think they directly, they directly correspond. The numbers seem to be the same.
Thank you very much for being here.
Can I ask a quick question?
Matt? Director Martin?
Thank you. Hey. Actually, I have a clarifying question and then a quick statement. I'm not familiar with the term promotion ceremony. Can you tell me with that?
Yeah. So for a number of years, so there's graduation, obviously, at high school, but at different stages...
Just celebrating, maybe, and move on to first grade.
The end, oh, you made it through kindergarten. Well, and there's been certain grades that have, that are more traditional, I guess. So it'd be kindergarten, it would be fifth, it would be eighth.
Right, okay. That's what I thought it was. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Certainly.
Clarification. But there's also one thing, and I think you mentioned it, and this goes back to a comment I made when the contract was ratified. Implementation is absolutely key to the success of this contract. And one of the things that I was really excited about were the opportunity to do joint trainings. So I'd be interested in hearing the perspective from administration, we can do that offline, on what has been the holdup since that moment, and how we can expediate that, because I think that's a, October doesn't make sense to me. And I think pushing that, pushing that forward, where, I mean, now, it might be too late for this year, depending on when trainings happen, but that seems like it's maybe a missed opportunity.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I know the conversations that have been going on between PAT and folks in our human resources to plan the trainings, and there was one that was scheduled right away. And there was one that was scheduled right away that then I think the opportunity to plan prior to actually put together what the training actually is prior to delivering. And I know they were setting a schedule for next year and looking at, at least three joint trainings over the course of next year was what I know.
I haven't heard that, so.
It's, that's, it's what I've heard from, yeah.
Did you all?
Thank you.
As I'd love to see if we could maybe get a, some information on the TEL survey results also maybe here.
So those, those were out, but they came via email. We haven't done them in the board meeting. But I did also want to thank you very much for bringing up some of those points. But I do want to let the public know that you can see all of them online at teloregon.org. So if you're interested in seeing more of those results, that's where you would go.
Thank you for saying that. I failed to mention that, but that's true. It's good to look at.
Okay. Okay, on to our next agenda item. We're very excited to receive Sackett's report tonight. The superintendent, shouldn't say Sackett, the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, and I'll say a little bit about the next two items because they are separate but connected. When we completed the Jefferson enrollment balancing process, one of the things that was a conversation and then a recommendation to the board and then subsequently a resolution was to look first at, and then I charged the committee, was to take a look at aligning our enrollment and transfer policies with our racial educational equity policy and our strategic framework. And then secondly, to do a district-wide approach to boundary review and boundary change rather than going cluster by cluster. Because invariably, as a large district, we had been looking at boundaries with, cluster by cluster. And then you had invariably hit a moment in the, in the conversation where you'd want to be able to include contiguous boundaries. And it would be, none of those folks had been in the conversation. So after, I then charged the Superintendent Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer, which actually has been in existence for five years. So some of the members that you will hear tonight have been advisors in previous processes. This current charge of aligning the enrollment and transfer policies with our racial educational equity policy, they've been tackling over the last fifteen months. This is a committee that actually is, has broad stakeholder representation. People applied to be on it. It's diverse geographically and in terms of what types of schools folks represent, what parts of the district, what clusters. And they, part of what is exceptional, I think, about this is this committee first takes on educating themselves about the complexity of the issues prior to actually beginning to make recommendations to me. So tonight, what you are going to hear is a status report from this committee and some preliminary recommendations. We will then, so we'll hear that, those status, they're seeking input from the board prior to making final recommendations back to me. So tonight will be, and actually I'll just leave it there and let that group go because following them, we are then going to hear about a preliminary approach to a boundary review process. But before they start, I'm going to ask Judy Brennan, who directs our enrollment and transfer office, and John Isaacs, who is the director of community involvement and public affairs, to come on up to present this. I'd like to ask the entire Sackett membership to please stand and let us just recognize you. And in particular, I'm sure Allison Burnett and Jason Tremblay, who are seated here up front, were the co-chairs of this committee. This committee has done incredibly deep and hard work and then written a fifty-one-page report, which they're delivering here tonight as a status report. And I'm just, I mean, it's an exceptional body of work. And not only have they deliberated amongst themselves, but they've then also sought input from the community on places they needed to learn more, convened panels of people that they are wanting to go deeper and learn more about the complexities of the issues that they're trying to then generate recommendations for me. So thank you for your work. And I will say, John Isaacs, Judy Brennan, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. I don't want to extend the preamble any longer because this is a very hard working group of folks. They have a lot to say. They've worked tirelessly to say it and to bring it to you at this moment. I'm going to get to that, but before we do, just to say, it's, it's an incredible pleasure and an honor as staff to be able to support such a community-based team. And I'll say that on behalf of John, Hector Rocha, Janine Facuto from our equity office, who are also a part of that. And we have actually a video presentation that introduces the group that we'd like to start. And then the next voices you'll hear will be co-chairs Jason Tremblay and Allison Burnett.
Throughout the last fifteen months, Sackett has met over twenty-eight times and had a series of informative discussions with staff members, department staff, but also principals and neighborhood and focus option schools, as well as conducted a series of interviews with parents throughout the district regarding special education policies, dual-language immersion, to really get an understanding of how race equity intersects with district policies.
It's an issue that I want to work on personally and that I like to work on as part of a system, like a school system. So being on Sackett gives me an opportunity to work on that issue that's very near and dear to me.
When I found that I was selected, I was really pretty happy because I have such a long time of involvement with Portland schools and I, I felt that I could bring to the committee some history and some, some passion.
It's a really collegial group of people, even though we all come from different parts of the district and we all have very different experiences and very different opinions about how we all, I mean, we all want to get to the same endpoint, which is to have a district that serves every kid just as well. But we all have different opinions about the best way to get there. So we have some spirited meetings, but it's, it's great.
It's been fascinating for me to be able to take the work hat off, come here with a broad section of our entire Portland Public School community stakeholders, past and present, parents, grandparents of children that have gone through Portland Public Schools. And for us to share our perspectives based on our own lens that we bring and then opening our, our lens wider to see that perspective from others. So it's been an amazing opportunity for me to see it through other people's eyes.
I'm excited to be part of Sackett because I feel that the work that is happening right now in the district in, at a policy level is really starting to have multiple perspectives. So I'm, I'm excited that it's kind of a, a new shift and a change that hasn't necessarily happened before in Portland and in a lot of other places. So I'm excited to be part of that.
I really like the ability to be engaged in what goes on in my high school district. I'm a firm believer that all students should get involved and I'm really happy that I have the opportunity to be on this committee and participate in making some positive change.
This is a great example of how we want to be engaging the community, which is really having a core group that becomes knowledgeable and then is really leading what other voices we need to hear as we're trying to get our arms around really complex issues. So I think they've done this in a really expert fashion. I think we've had a lot of voices really informing their sense-making in the report they'll deliver to me. And I feel really good about this as a model that we would like to replicate on other tough issues. So again, thank you to them, not only for the work they've done on enrollment and transfer, but building a model process for us as well.
Sorry, but we're just waiting for the PowerPoint to get up. All right. Good evening, Superintendent Smith. Thank you very much for the warm introduction. Members of the school board and our student representative. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear from us. After thirteen-plus months, we're excited to be able to take the time and present our preliminary recommendations to you. As the superintendent kind of gave a quick overview, we've been diving deep into a number of these, these issues to figure out where we want to actually make some real impact and figure out what that impact looks like to better serve the students of this district. So thank you for giving us the flexibility and also the resources and staff and personnel to actually make this come together. So thank you for that. So we'll go ahead with our presentation. So first up is, in large part, how we got here. As the superintendent outlined, Sackett has been in place for over five years at this point. But in February of two thousand and thirteen, as a result of the Jefferson enrollment balancing process, the board had passed a resolution that charged, that came, that basically developed two outcomes. One of them being to charge Sackett with aligning enrollment and transfer policy recommendations to align them with the racial educational equity policy, but also the strategic framework. But then also for the district to conduct a process of district-wide boundary review. In addition, this process was called for by community members as part of the Jefferson enrollment balancing process. So the reason, the work that we're doing is a direct action response to what the community members a year ago had requested. And additionally, over that time since Sackett first started meeting on this issue in March, we've met over thirty times. So every other Tuesday night from about mid-March to about last week or two weeks ago. So we've been working really hard to come together on a number of these issues. In addition to that, are also our great writing group that put together this report, spent, I think, on average about twenty-plus hours over the course of three days, including Memorial Day weekend, to put together the report that was included as part of your board book. So again, these are all amazing volunteers who put a lot of time and resources to put this together. In addition to that, so one of the things that we did do in September was that we provided the board an interim status update as to where we were in the fall and kind of mapped out where we were going to go next.
So when we last met with you, we presented an interim report at that time and we said that we were going to be asking ourselves three questions over the next period of time. One of them was, how will we know when we have completed our inquiry phase and are ready for the recommendations phase? Second question was, who else does Sackett need to hear from during the inquiry phase? How can we be most inclusive in who we hear from? And how can we ensure that the voices who have been historically left out get included? And the third question we asked ourselves was, what is the best way to hear those perspectives? Those are the questions we've been working on, as well as the recommendations that we want to make. And we have landed on a report that you now have.
So following these conversations in the fall, Sackett spent the fall developing an issues inventory to catalog the issues that we could potentially address in our work, based on the information that we received to date as of September, through data presentations and panels with principals, both neighborhood and focus option school principals, and as well as community representatives. Additionally, that work in the fall and over the winter helped Sackett identify what additional information that we needed to obtain before we could, we were able to determine what problems are there with the existing enrollment and transfer system through the lens of the district's racial education equity policy. At this time, we still have communities to engage with in order to be authentic with implementing the racial educational equity policy into our work. Thus, at this time, and the recommendations that we're presenting to you are preliminary.
So we want to introduce to you who the committee members are, and if they can give a wave so that we can put a face with the name. Scott Bailey from the Grant Cluster. Tracy Barton from the Lincoln Cluster. Talitha Benjamin, Jefferson Madison Cluster. Marty Berger is our student rep from the Lincoln Cluster. I'm Allison Burnett from the Grant Cluster and one of the co-chairs. Gabrielle Bolivar from Jefferson Roosevelt Cluster. Brenna Hurwitz from the Wilson Cluster.
Nicole Markwell from the Madison Cluster. Shannon McClure from the Roosevelt Cluster and PPS teacher at James John Sitton School. Rita Moore from the Roosevelt Cluster. Nisha Saxana from the Grant Cluster. Sorolda Summers McGee from the Madison Cluster. Colleen Thorn Lad from the Roosevelt Cluster. Myself, Jason Tremblay from the Roosevelt Cluster and co-chair. And lastly, Neely Wells of the Franklin Cluster.
We wanted to give you a little bit of information about who we heard from in the last fifteen months. So as Jason said, we heard from neighborhood and focus option school principal panels. We have taken on an incredible amount of data from various staff members in enrollment and transfer, in the Equity Department, ESL, dual-language immersion from the Communications Department and School Operations and Supports Department. A lot of staff members who came and brought data presentation to us gave us information to bring us up to speed. We've heard from a panel of parents of students with disabilities and we went to a meeting of the Asian and Pacific Islander Community, the Apano Community, to hear their perspectives. We have two more communities that we have an intention of holding listening sessions with in the next few weeks, and that is the African-American community and the Latino community. Those are being planned now.
So next up, what we're going to walk you through is kind of, A, our process, kind of the guiding beliefs and statements that drove our work. Give you an overview of our recommendations, then outline what we think some potential next steps are, as well as hear from you the board as to what our next steps should be to best do this work. So first in the series of our, the belief statements that drove our work. One, the strength of the PPS system should be the prevailing consideration, even over the individual needs and desires. Two, that the enrollment system should not exacerbate patterns of segregation by race and class. Three, that neighborhood schools should be the foundation of the PPS system and significant effort brought to bear to create strong schools in every neighborhood. Four, supports lessening, supports lessening the degree of choice in favor of strengthening neighborhood school enrollment.
Five, we applaud the increase in equity allocation for school funding resulting in more program parity. That focus options meant to serve the general population should reflect the demographics of the district. The district needs to provide strong ESL and DLI programs close to home for emerging bilingual students. And that all of our recommendations should be tested for unintended outcomes and that additional community conversations be held before we make our final policy recommendations.
Okay, and next we'll be walking through our preliminary recommendations.
All right, the first recommendation, there are six. The first recommendation is a strategic focus on neighborhood schools. Sackett believes that every child deserves a vibrant, sustainable, welcoming, and robust neighborhood school. And that strategic resource allocation is needed to improve leadership, teaching, program parity, and cultural competence. You'll notice this is pretty, pretty much along the lines of the high school redesign outcomes in that calling for a robust neighborhood-based program with equalized, strong schools in every cluster in that case. The second is an end to neighborhood, neighborhood lottery transfers. Recognizing that this goes hand in hand with the first recommendation, which is to provide the resources to make every neighborhood school a strong one. If you're going to prevent people from moving between them, make sure that every neighborhood school is a strong school. We recognize in this, in this recommendation that there is a paradox in that we recognize that low-income families and students of color are disproportionately affected by inconsistencies in programming and disciplinary practices, making access to transfers an important component. We have heard from African-American families who advocate to get their children out of some of our neighborhood schools because they are aware that other African-American students are over-disciplined, pulled out of classrooms, or undermined in reaching their potential. And that they want access to a current, to the current transfer system to be able to make changes to schools where they feel like their child can be in a, a school that is safe and a community that treats them with respect. And so we recognize that we need to continue to racialize our work as we continue to think about the experience of choice in our system and what it means to change that for various communities. The third recommendation is accountability for focus option schools. We seek transparency and clarity around the purpose that they serve and the value that they bring to the system as a whole. In this recommendation, we also have unanimous agreement that the current way that the focus option schools exist is not serving the system as a whole and that student demographics are not representative of the district and that families of color are underrepresented in applications to these schools.
Recommendation four, which is around support for dual-language immersion programs. So the committee landed on this recommendation in that we support expansion with caution, advise for unanticipated impacts of program siting or situating and co-location. So dual-language immersion programs continue to be a popular program in the district as seen in the increasing number of students that apply for them each year. Additionally, these programs have better success rates academically at serving emerging bilingual students than other ESL programs. Dual-language immersion program expansion continues throughout the district, especially in neighborhoods where emerging bilingual students reside, while also noting that not all high school clusters currently have dual-language immersion programs. An unintended consequence arises when situating programs in these neighborhoods, resulting in families moving into those neighborhoods and potentially pushing out EB families that PPS is intentionally trying to serve better. Additionally, given the impact of gentrification, as I noted above, Sackett supports dual-language immersion expansion, but it must take into consideration the impacts of site location of programs, both the neighborhoods and co-location of existing programs. Recommendation five, which is modifications of the focus option lottery. Recommendation five, which is modifications of the focus option lottery. Our recommendation around this is with the hope to close the opportunity gap for historically underserved students. We're also initially recommending that we modify preferences and weights, and also add a geographic balancer to increase broader inclusion of students both in the application and as well as the acceptance rates. By improving, again, of access to focus options, our hope is that we will close the achievement gap for historically underserved students. And then lastly, preliminary recommendation six, which is specifically supporting students with disabilities. Students assigned outside their neighborhood school for services should be able to remain at that school to the highest grade, and siblings should be able to join them. Two, we should, the district should also work to, towards the concept of universal design across the district. Okay? Where can do that?
So where do we go from here? We are looking forward to receiving some feedback from Superintendent Smith and from the Board of Directors. We have more, as we've mentioned, we have more voices that we want to listen to. We don't feel like we're done with our work of listening to communities, and so we're currently scheduling some listening sessions with the African-American and the Latino communities. We have still a list of outstanding issues that we have not yet gotten to in fifteen months. We would like to see some data simulations to be able to look at some of the, to look for unintended consequences of our recommendations. So we would like to see the Enrollment Transfer Department run some simulations so that we can better understand what we're recommending and the impacts that it might have. We want to continue using our Equity Lens tool as we looked at the impact of policy changes, particularly on communities of color. We will be participating in the Districtwide Boundary Review. We want to go deeper into our proposed lottery mechanism changes, thinking about what it would mean to change different preferences and weights, and what kind of changes those would make. And lastly, we are aware of the desire to finalize our recommendations in time to impact the next enrollment cycle, and that is our goal for the coming months.
So with that given, SACIT's work to date, we have two questions that we would like to pose to the board to frame our conversation this evening. Given the initial charge and the resolution that was adopted in February of 2013, we'd like to hear from your, are we, were you all expected we would be in the course of our work so far? And additionally, what advice do you all have for us as we continue to move forward in our work? So with that, Chair Knowles and members of the board, we look forward to our dialogue this evening.
This committee is exactly the type of thing that we should be doing throughout the school district, and you're such a model for what wonderful work you can get out of a group where you put them together in a diverse way, and then you let them actually go to work, and it's out of the community, and I just, boy, this is a terrific report, and I really appreciate all the work you've done. But it's more than that, it's that you really have done a nice job. And so it's trippy. I hope we, we can use this and do more work similar to this within the district for the problems that we have, because you're attacking one of the hardest ones. I had two questions about, and number, to answer your question first, you're about where I expected since I wasn't here five years ago, so I guess you're where I expect you to be. So I, and I, I don't think I have advice for you, you seem to be doing a wonderful job. And I do have two questions, though. One was, the, the data simulations that you're talking about, now you've been going for five years, and now you're asking for data simulations, you wouldn't, I mean, how does that, is that, are you not getting them, or you just haven't asked for them yet, or how does that work out?
So the data that we have been presented is just a context of what the current system is right now. Given the, given where we're going in terms of what we would like to do to better align ENT policies with the racial educational equity policies, one of the things that members have requested is, if we do recommendation X, so for hypothetical, if we, you know, adjust the socioeconomic status weighting in the lottery, if we, you know, bump it up by, you know, ten percentage points, how many more students will that get in a particular school? So we recognize that we want to get more students in a number of schools, but the question is, what's kind of that sweet spot? And so we want to kind of say, if we can get more students, what's the ideal recommendation we would like to make to make that potentially happen?
Now, is that, have you done that preliminary work and talked to people about, hey, can, can we actually do this? Do we have the capability to do it? Have you, where's the whole thing stand right now with these recommendations on the data simulations?
I'd like to comment. One of the things that we discovered-
Do you want to come on over and, so that they can get it on the record, otherwise the, the people at home can't hear you speak. Thank you very much. Go ahead and identify yourself if you would.
I'm Talitha Benjamin, and people will know that I always have something to say. I happen to be one of the original members of SACIT. And the thing that I wanted to say in response to your question is that these are not the first recommendations. The original group made recommendations to the board that went nowhere. So I think that what we're moving to in this effort is to get a way to strengthen our recommendations so that there will be action, because, you know, I've been around for five years, and I'm almost eighty years old, so I don't plan on being around much longer. And I want to be sure that we get some action this time. And I think that's why we're looking to research and to find out what it is that actually exists and how what we propose may have impact on change. So that's what, that's what that's all about.
Thank you very much, Ms. Benjamin.
Thank you.
One more question.
Okay, go ahead.
The other question I have is a little different. In recommendation three, which is accountability for focus options, which is tied, I think, to recommendation five, which is the modifications. As, do you have information that talks specifically about why underserved children choose these options less? I mean, have you looked at that and say, here's reasons within, there's some reasons, of course, within the school system, and then you've looked at those, but what about the other reasons outside? Transportation problems and those types of things? Have you done any data gathering or looking at that particular situation?
That's one of the reasons we want to hold more conversations, is that we do have more questions in mind to ask. Why, why don't they choose these schools? Is it not appealing to them? Is it not relevant? And what are the other many reasons that I'm sure exist why they're not choosing these schools?
So you're saying that's a direction that you want to go yet, that you haven't gone yet, and off you go. Okay, thank, thank you. That's a good direction to go.
Can I just say, we actually were hoping that if other members of SACIT want to speak, and we're getting, we're trying to get you a handheld mic, but you can also, if other people want to speak, come on up and join the co-chairs. Just because such a diversity of perspectives are in the group, come on up and answer if you're so moved.
That'll be great.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Bolivar, and several things that we discussed when we looked at the data is the difference between the applicant pool in the lottery, which is typically an online system in English, versus the hardship petitions, which have a very different racial and ethnic outlook. So when you look at the lottery in the time, particularly when we talk about the focus option schools, that you have to go and take a tour, you have to sign, so you have to have a lot of knowledge well in advance of the process, and then get your application in online in February, a lot of those spots are now filled in that lottery prior to the hardships coming in then for families who learn about those opportunities. The hardship applicant pool was just a complete flip in terms of the socioeconomic and racial and ethnic makeup than the paper lottery. The other piece that we looked at is the transportation barrier, the geographic siting or location of the focus options, and the cultural relevancy in terms of the demand. So those were just some of the broader context of what we looked at in this.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members? Sure. Director Buell?
Hi, thank you for your amazing and long work with us. Greatly appreciated. I noticed in your report, you clearly focused quite a bit on focus schools, and you have a little bit of dialogue around charter schools. I was curious, as you go forward and you continue to do your work, whether you will be providing any recommendations similar to what you're doing on the focus option programs, whether you would be looking also at the impact of charter schools, because I think we have about ten in our district, the community-based alternative programs and what those mean, although that's much more high school, and I know that you're really focused more on K-8, but curious about that. And then the final piece is open enrollment and what that means in terms of these recommendations, because it kind of blows things up in a whole different way than what we've experienced in the past. So just a couple of areas that I think at some point we're going to need to kind of take into consideration as we're looking at these recommendations, too.
So that's something we haven't directly talked about in some of our previous conversations, but I think as we go forward in our next couple of work, we definitely may be able to figure out if that's one of the major areas we want to take on. I think one of the things you just talked about with the different kinds of schools, that one thing comes up in the context of choice, is really about why families are really choosing those particular schools unlike choosing their neighborhood schools. So I think one of the fundamental tensions that has come up for me as a member over time is, really around choice, is how is that particular school going to better serve my child better? So I think it's about, you could have a portfolio of schools across the board, but at the same time, if your neighborhood school isn't going to serve that child better, you should have choice to an extent, or if you're going to put restrictions on the system, how are you going to fundamentally ensure that, like what we call out in our executive summary in our SACIT process part of the report, how are you going to fundamentally make sure that services across the board are going to really hit that student to the best ability that they can, whether it's culturally relevant teachers, reduce rate and disproportionate discipline, et cetera? So there's a fundamental kind of relationship that interplays, especially with the number of the alternative options that you just talked about.
The one area in particular that I'm very concerned about in all of this is the whole issue of open enrollment, because if we restrict neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfers, and yet we have some neighborhood schools that are under-enrolled, and we'd like to get that up, how fair is it to offer enrollment to out-of-district folks versus in-district folks? And does that kind of blow up what you're trying to do in terms of having our schools be representative of our neighborhood communities? And so it's a, it's a, it's a big issue, I think, as, as we're looking at all of this. So, thank you.
I just have been, had the honor of attending a lot of your meetings and watching, observing your process over the last several months, and I've just been so impressed and just, just delighted and honored by the, the time and attention and depth of thought and diversity of perspectives that you've brought to this. I've just been kind of watching and then, you know, trying to my best to sort of give it, the gist of it back to the board, my board colleagues, so hopefully it's not too big a surprise. I was trying to sort of say, this is sort of the questions they're wrestling with, and here's, here's some of the directions. So yes, you are where I expected you to be based on the last meeting I went to. And I just, you know, again, really want to appreciate the work that you have done in, in wrestling with this. We did, and, and in keeping with it over years, as Ms. Benjamin noted, you know, the years and years of trying to get some change in this district and still trying to come to the meetings and engage in the process, and still have that hope and belief that something, something will change. So we had, you know, we had the audit back in 2006, I think it was, from the Flynn Blackmore audit, that found that the, what we are trying to achieve with our transfer system, we are not accomplishing, what the, the point of the transfer system and choice had not been well articulated, and that it was, if anything, exacerbating the patterns of racial and class division that are present in our city. And at the time, the district said, yes, this is right, we need to look at it, and we have, many things have changed since then, but nothing really fundamentally about our enrollment and transfer policies. Although we did, certainly through high school system design, make some changes that were in line with, and I think reflectedly, some of the SACIT inputs, so that was-
The SACIT recommendations were included as part of high school system design?
Right.
Yeah, which was the first installment.
Right. So really, and, you know, and the major change, though, that I would point to that I think really feels to me as if we're poised to make some, some thoughtful and important changes in our historical policies and practices, is our racial educational equity policy. And, and just sort of seeing you all, again, bringing your diverse perspectives and using, using the racial equity lens, and really trying to figure out what is best for all kids in our city and our system, was just, again, an outstanding example of how to do this work and how to work with these tough issues. So deeply appreciate that, your values. I'm completely in agreement with your, your value statements. And, and I just, I'm looking, so in terms of advice for you, I think it's, you know, we need to let staff and the superintendent or staff mull through it. I'd love to hear some recommendations back from them as they, as they work with you in terms of what could be some short-term, mean- and term-long-term, what needs more study. I think the neighborhood-to-neighborhood one, as you would agree, I'm sure, like the data simulations, what could be, how can we avoid unintended consequences of that, given what we're, we're trying to accomplish the same thing? We want to make sure, because this is so complex, as you all well know, after your many, many hours of study. So, and then, of course, we also need to mesh with the Districtwide Boundary Framework and all that work that we're about to hear about next, and that will also be ongoing. So I guess, knowing that we're winding down the school year, which traditionally is kind of a pause in district work, I think this year will be different, and I'm hoping that we're not going to lose the great momentum that you have, that you have right now, and that will, so that we can figure out a ways, how can we keep this going? How can we make sure that it's, you know, part of our work going forward, that you've meshed, we're meshing it in with the Districtwide Boundary Framework, and that there is, that there is a follow-up, that we can come back, and whatever that timing might be, that, you know, between the co-chairs and the superintendent to work out what the timing could be for the board to hear your formal, you know, what your, your final recommendations are, your intermediate ones, your response, and then, and then our action. Again, perhaps partial, short-term, long-term, whatever it might be, whatever we deem appropriate, but I'm, want there to be action. And again, I just appreciate the depth and integrity of, of your work and your report, and appreciate your service to the city and to the children of the city.
Can I, go ahead. Can I talk to Director Regan's questions?
I don't think it's doing. Come on up.
Name a button on the bottom. Regan can just come up.
Come on up and use the one over here. Yeah, sorry. Was it working? Just a little.
Okay, technology is not my strong point. So I, I think the, the two questions you asked about charters and open enrollment. So I think it's fair to say that we didn't actually consider charters. It was kind of taken off the table from the beginning.
By, by who? Or why? Would you know?
I don't think, I've, I think we collectively decided it, mostly because, I, I think it was mostly because we had so many other things, it was already so complicated. I mean, I, for one, would be happy to, to broaden it to include charter schools, I don't know what my colleagues would think, but it is a different calculation, I, I think. I mean, the, the dynamics are different in, in some ways from focus options. But I think it's certainly worth looking at, particularly because charter schools have, have an outsized impact on certain parts of town. The other thing about open enrollment, I, I think it's important to note that throughout our discussions, we were, we were thinking about our recommendations in the context of Districtwide Boundary Review. So right now, we have some schools that are very over-enrolled and others that are very under-enrolled. And the theory is, the hope is, that with the Districtwide Boundary Review, those kinds of situations will, will be resolved. So I think the hope is that open enrollment won't really be a huge issue. That's the hope.
Everybody back here was wiggling in their chair, wanting to say that we really didn't talk about charter schools because it, it was not something we ever thought we had any control over, therefore input was invalid at best. And then, since I have the mic in my hand, I, I personally would really thank Directors Atkins and Regan for coming to all of those meetings. It's a lot of time on top of all the time that you're putting in, and it mattered that you were there and paying attention. So thank you. And then I would just remind the board that while we've mostly considered K-8 in the last fifteen months, high schools did come in frequently, and the enrollment and transfer office this year implemented what we familiarly call the Benson Balancer, which was a big change in transfer and enrollment policy, and it did make a difference, and it does seem to have been effective. So there is- So, there is potential to make change.
So, could I just follow up on the charter school question? The reasons I was asking is if we're looking at ending neighborhood to neighborhood transfers, then if parents choose to want to move out and be still in the local community, that would be one of their options, and so it does have some impact. And the other thing is that we, as a board, are the group that says yes or no to charter school applications, and so it would be interesting to have you weigh in with us on that issue. We have recently approved another charter that's starting next year as an example. So, it does have an impact, certainly. So, that's why I was just asking if there had been much discussion or if there could be.
Yeah, and just to follow up with that, I mean, I think that was, for me, one of the most sobering, eye-opening pieces with hearing, because certainly, I've been aware and mindful of the impact of neighborhood to neighborhood transfers and the vicious cycle and program and enrollment and so forth and all the other pieces there, but to hear from an African-American parent member of the committee, the issue that Allison was talking about in terms of using transfer to escape from a school where either the perception, the reality was that their child would be either disciplined inappropriately or disrespected, or that their family would not be welcome, was, so that was, for me, again, that's one of that piece where, and I know that you kept the hardship transfer, hardship request piece in there in your recommendation partly because of that, but that's one of the ones where it's really to figure out, you know, the balance there so that in, you know, so that we don't end up with an alternative, where we're moving toward this alternative system of charters that is outside our control, that exacerbates, in my opinion, the very issue of trying to, that undermines the strong neighborhood schools because of the loss of enrollment and parent energy and all the rest and thus program. So, anyway, it was, I think you're absolutely right to highlight it. I totally get why the committee just recognized it legally and every way else is outside their purview, but it's definitely going to have to be part of the discussion as we figure out what are some solutions going forward, or what are some things we can pilot or test, just as Judy in her office piloted that Benson Balancer. What are some things that we can just sort of, this has been, system's been around for a while, there have been some tweaks and improvements, but again, using a racial equity lens is new and deeply necessary and important, so we can figure out, we can figure something out, we can make it work.
Want to thank you. Echo thanks for all the work that you all have done, and I'm going to answer your two questions and then I'm going to bridge on to a couple of other things. But first, I want to ask a question back to you. I mean, you mentioned that you're going to do some listening sessions with African-American and Latino families or organizations, and as I think about our racial equity policy, I wonder if, I don't remember seeing any Native American listening session, and I think about our disparities in our education policy. I'm just curious, can you talk to me a little bit of your thinking about that? And have there been listening sessions, or are we interested in that? Are you interested in that? Because I'm interested in that, I guess.
I would, I'm definitely interested, and I think our biggest question is, can we actually get everything in that we're saying that we want to get done? If we can, I would love, absolutely love to make it happen.
We prioritize to those three groups, Latino, Asian Pacific, and African-American. They just sort of rose to the top for us, but it wasn't by any means of excluding any other groups, and we have, you know, we would love to do as many listening sessions as we can. For some reason, we prioritize those three for as soon as possible and then move on from there.
I'm just thinking about the families that have historically not been served, that it's that kind of automatic pilot that gets us to places. So, thank you. Are you where I expected you to be? No, and just partly because this felt, I know that it's preliminary recommendations, this felt like a catalog, a really thorough catalog of places where we knew, things that we knew kind of anecdotally or all along, and I guess I was expecting to maybe have a little bit more of a straw man or a little bit more push of this is the direction we're heading and why. So, I'll just share that. It's, again, not a negative feedback, but.
It literally felt like a catwalk.
Fifty-one. Yeah, it was great. But so, it just made me, you have, there's a lot to be done in the next three months, and I don't want it to surprise the community because I think, again, you pointed out that different people are in different starting points, or maybe that's the district boundary review. And I guess I was also, what advice do I have as you move toward final recommendations? I guess, I think this is where the district boundary for me and the enrollment and transfer begin to mash, and I'm really glad that we have them here, is the district wide boundary group in their report talked about how this can be a very political process. There's this feeling in the district that the last loudest voice kind of rises to the top, which is, I guess, part of why I was hoping that this might push that a little bit so that we had time to hear those loud voices and work through them with your help. But I guess it's just a request to you all that you guys have been deeply emerged in this work for five years, maybe longer, even if Sackett wasn't officially formed, that we're going to need your support with whatever direction we have, because, again, as the district wide boundary, three months is a really short time to get the penetration in a community for a message that we're so inundated with messages. It's so important, and the more people we have to help with that, because we all know that this is, this could be politically a potential difficult and challenging piece, and I don't want to see it. I want to take the action that needs to happen for our students. And going back to the, again, the district wide, I felt like they just coalesced with each other so well that, and you called it out in your report, the lack of clarity, what the purpose is for our enrollment transfer. I didn't see much in there about what it was. I see that we're aligning this with our racial equity policy, but is, if enrollment and transfer is to achieve racial equity, I'd be curious to hear whether or not that's the strongest lever or how that interplays, or is there a purpose that we should be looking for, something that you've come across in your, that this is really what you're going for? Because I thought it was just really powerful to hear that there's a lack of clarity. We're doing dual language immersion programs, and sometimes it feels a little bit arbitrary. We look at the data, we say we're going to use bigger, highest population or most significant population numbers, but the clarity sometimes escapes me, and so I appreciated you calling that out. And you pointed out, Director Atkins, and you just all said, how do we make sure that we have a system where people are making the choice to escape something? Because I think that's, we all intuitively do that, and my worry with this choice, whether it's open enrollment, is that the fact of the matter is there's a certain segment of our population, however that you want to cut that or slice that, that really doesn't have any choice. Their choice is to send their child to public school for a variety of reasons, and then there are other people in our community for whom we can never take a choice away. They will always have other options. And how do we make sure, because I think we're strong in having a majority of people still sending their students to public school in Portland, how do we balance that? And so, I didn't see much about that. I saw some of the history of how we got here about there was a time when we were trying not to have middle-class flight, white middle-class flight, and we're trying to move beyond that, and at the same time, we want to make sure that all families feel like they have a good option in their neighborhood. And then, what are the focus options or what are the immersion programs? What is their role? What are we trying to achieve with them? So, thank you all for this, and again, I hope that you will, oh, I also wanted to mention, I really appreciate the attention to special education, the idea of moving us towards universal design. It's the only way that we make this an equitable system, and we have to change the policy to at least acknowledge that there are certain segments of families that don't have that option. We don't even give them that option right now. So, thank you for highlighting that and calling that out. So, thanks.
What I want to say is just about your comment about people leaving. If you have good schools, who's going to walk away from a good school and go somewheres to create something else? So, we've got to have good schools.
My worry with that, if I, so I can perspective, I know families that are leaving good schools right now, and I get a lot of variety of reasons of why families choose different schools, so that's the part that's hard for me, is that we have lots of good schools and I still see people leaving. But you're absolutely right, people aren't going to walk away from what they consider a good school.
First, thank you, Director Blile, is a Native American and tribal member. It's nice not to be the one expected to ask the question about, have you talked to the Native American community? I think it is an important piece, particularly as a historically underserved community, so I would second that. The first answer to your question, I think, is yes. And, you know, I think back 15 or so months ago when this was a recommendation that emerged out of the Jefferson enrollment balancing, and because it felt so awkward to have policies and practices that were no longer consistent with what, or I should say, practices that were no longer consistent with what the current policies were, including the racial educational equity policy. But we were still implementing them as such. So, and at the time, also, we were looking at, you know, a cluster by cluster enrollment and balancing, tweaking here and there, which put each cluster within, in danger of, is there a school that's going to be closed or something that's going to happen? Looking at it this way more holistically, I think, is appropriate, and all of you have taken on that challenge, and thank you so much for doing so. I want to, I think the devil is in the details in this, and whether it's issues of ending the lottery transfers, neighborhood to neighborhood, I think Bobby's comment is right on, how do we prioritize the students within our own district? But I also want to really appreciate that there's some, even some nuance in that, that in the comments that were made in terms of the safety of students or whether it's perceived or not, those are very real across communities of color, and if we're not taking that into consideration and using that as an opportunity to better educate, the other alternative is, in fact, to see a lot more students dropping out. And because if the parents don't get an opportunity to engage and to make that change, the students will make that change, and it oftentimes isn't one that is too favorable, at least in my experience. So, I appreciate that nuanced approach to this, and I'm eager to look at the final recommendations. I don't have any suggestions in terms of what to look at further except for some of that more authentic engagement that you've done already, but I'm eager to see what those final recommendations are, and again, how we can begin to implement those, because I think you've done the hard sort of backbreaking labor that you've been charged to do. So, thank you.
Andrew?
So, first of all, this is a fantastic report. I have to say, it's really exciting for me to read things like this because a lot of times I feel like on this board, I read things from staffs, and sometimes you can almost feel the disconnect from my perspective and theirs, but with this, I really felt like it was a real genuine look at what was happening. I could actually, I was reading things, and I was like, wow, I actually get it. So, while I haven't been on this board long enough to really say, you know, you're where I expected you to be or not, and I don't have a bunch of advice, but I would just say, you know, continue to do what you're doing, and I would just, you know, I talk with a few of you actually regularly about a variety of issues, but I would love to hear from all of you because the level of work that you're engaged in, it's not just about enrollment and transfer, it's really a systematic look, and so I would just love to hear from all of you more. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's an inspiring comment. Thank you for that.
Others?
Yeah, just, I have a question. You had mentioned that one of the recommendations was unanimous, and so I was curious to know about the other recommendations and if they're, maybe you could add, give a little texture to those in terms of different opinions.
The first one, strategic focus on neighborhood schools, I would say unanimous. Ending neighborhood lottery transfers, I would say unanimous. Accountability for focus. If they say no, I'm in trouble.
Show of hands, show of hands.
Probably focus option schools had the most diversity of opinions, ranging from people saying, take out focus option schools in favor of strengthening neighborhood schools, to the other end of the spectrum, people saying there is room for focus option schools in a healthy, robust system. But unanimous in the agreement that the way they are existing now and not representative of the student demographics of this district are not acceptable. So, unanimous in that aspect of it.
The one thing that I'll add was, prior to our actual issuing of the report, we did one final straw poll of the membership of where do they, how well do they support the existing report in the format that you've all seen, and that ended of 15 members, 13 in support, one neutral, and one did not support in the current form. So, there was strong consensus across the board that the committee endorses the preliminary package that we have before you.
Thank you.
Any others?
Did you want me to go on? Yes. Dual language immersion. Support for expansion with careful thinking about citing and location, I would say unanimous. Modification of the focus option lottery, unanimous, that changes have to happen, exactly what changes or how, we have a lot of questions still to answer. Supporting students with disabilities, unanimous. And I think perhaps the reason that there are only six recommendations, we had many, many more that we talked about, is that we were really bringing, rising to the top what we all really agreed on at this moment in time. So, there's strong support.
So, there's two areas right off the top of my head where I can see some natural tensions or some even direct conflicts in recommendations, and I could name them if you want. One would, one obvious one is expanding dual language immersion programs, and yet, on the other hand, not doing neighborhood to neighborhood transfers, and so if you have a student here who speaks this language, they can't go over here and be served by that program, and that's a really obvious one. Go ahead. So, would that be considered a focus option? Would that be considered neighborhood with a focus option?
So, yeah, so we, one of the issues we deal with is that there's no clear nomenclature about this different type of schools. So, when we're talking about neighborhood schools, we're talking about either schools that don't have any kind of other special program like immersion or, like at Hayhurst with Odyssey, or we're talking about the neighborhood side of our hybrid schools that have a neighborhood and an immersion. Does that clarify?
So, you're looking very specifically at focus programs as opposed to focus schools?
Right. And sometimes when we say focus option, we mean, we include the immersion programs in there, and sometimes we're talking about, I think we've used the word pure focus option, which are schools that are entirely lottery-based, which includes Richmond, but, and then the four other.
And because, again, when you look at focus option programs, which you've typically said are majority white, English-speaking, well, all of a sudden, if you're throwing immersion programs into that, you're getting a completely different definition. Okay, so, maybe as you go, some way to kind of clarify.
Maybe you could help us with that.
I'd be happy to. I'd be happy. Well, that was the other thing I was going to say, is that we're, it sounds like what you're asking for is a superintendent's feedback, and you're getting some feedback from us, but I would love to see the board do a whole work session on this issue to help provide feedback. That would be wonderful.
We'll definitely do that. It's just, this is a different time. This is to hear from them. We're going to do that.
Okay. Well, that wasn't clear to me.
I think I sent a memo out to everybody about what we were going to do from here on out. Includes work sessions.
Can I throw something on the table? As you think about that session? Some of us on the committee, and I will say, including me, would like to see the district come out with a plan to make immersion available to every student who wants it in Portland.
You would be the only ones. Yay. I think, I think there's many of us would be there, too.
We are all channeling Dave Porter.
So, another, so just another tension that I had at least picked up is when you were talking about your recommendation number six, supporting students with disabilities, you specifically said that you advocate that preference be granted for siblings to have the option to join them. And on the other hand, it sounded like you're struggling with the whole sibling preference issue because a lot of times that locks out historically underserved students from being able to be there, and so, again, that's, it's just one of those natural conflicts, and I'm not asking for any answers, I'm just realizing that. it's, it's tough, and I'd love for us to help you sort through some of that as you go.
Yeah, the sibling preference really comes to bear in the, the pure focus option programs. And I think there's some examples in there around Winter Haven, for example, where, where siblings take up a huge chunk of, if you don't have a sibling in there, it's really hard to get.
But then it gets, and I think charter schools, you often see that, too, but I think it then gets into the whole value that we place on keeping families together, and, you know, that, that isn't one that was specifically addressed in here, I don't believe, but it would be one worthwhile to explore further.
And there was lots of discussion, I mean, I'm not, not speak for you guys, but there was lots of discussion about that as well. And I, I just also want to echo Director Belial's appreciation for the focus on special education students, and I don't want that to be lost in this, that maybe the neighborhood to neighborhood and the focus option piece might get more attention, and I want to make sure we follow through on, because just the issue in hearing from the impacted parents around the, the lack of a coherent feeder system, and the bumping, and all those things that have gone on for years and years, and so, I guess, you know, in terms of differentiating resources, if you will, through the racial, through the equity policy, differentiating access and stability opportunities for students with disabilities and their families, was the value I heard in that.
Yeah, and that was really the core of our special education recommendation, was that we heard from families that get pushed from one cluster to another, and they get yanked back into their neighborhood, and really yanked out of whatever community they start to get set up, that we really want that kind of guarantee that you can stay in your cluster, that services will be there, and that's, that's a whole, that's a whole plan for how, how we support our kids with special needs.
This goes back to, I don't know if it's advice, but I'll just leave you with a question that I hope you guys are considering, what your role is, as I mentioned before, once you make your recommendations. As you pointed out, there's a diversity of opinion, and probably everybody will not wholeheartedly agree with every one of your recommendations, or will think there are other additional recommendations, and to have people as informed and as connected with the communities as you are, I just, I hope that you'll spend some time thinking about what the role is, that if you wind up not getting a recommendation that you thought, are you gonna spend time gathering up all the people you know that believe with you to politicize the, the process more? Or is it a consensus piece where we all agree to support these, and then whoever? And I don't know what the answer to that is, but I just, I hope you spend some time thinking about that, because it'll be important in how we begin to process and how our community processes that with us.
Okay, just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you very much to all the members of the committee, it's been a long haul, I know for all of you, and I appreciate that, and still a little bit ways to go, and, or a lot to go, we'll see. And second, I want to thank Ruth for your regular updates for us. After every meeting she attended, she was sending notices out to all of us about what happened, and that, that has been very, very helpful, great job, Azalea's on there. So, are, let's see, are we where you expected us to be? You know, I didn't have any really strong expectations, but I was very hopeful that you would be done, so. So I know that you're working toward that, and I appreciate that, and I would, I think, echo a couple of other people who said, don't take your foot off the gas, let's just keep moving forward with this. I know that it's summer, and sometimes we kind of kick back a little bit, but I think for the sake of our families, we need to keep moving this forward and not slow down. What more would I, let's see, what advice do you have as we move toward final recommendations? So I had a couple of things, I, I could echo all of my colleagues on a lot of what they said, and I do, but I would, I would make a couple of comments. One is, and I think it's kind of the overarching issue that we have here, and that is, you know, what is the purpose of the enrollment and transfer policy? So, is it to create strong neighborhood schools? Is it to provide racial equity? Is it to make sure that every child has an equal opportunity? I mean, we, I think we as a board, as we receive your recommendations, I'm hoping that you have a recommendation on that, and that we can also weigh in on that and consider that recommendation, but I think that's really the overarching issue that we have to get to before we can talk about all of these other recommendations that you've given us. So, some of the things that I was thinking about as you were talking, one was the sibling preference issue, I'd like to see more information on that, especially at non-focus schools. Of course, you're already saying no neighborhood to neighborhood transfers, so that may do away with that issue, except that we still will have, and I guess that's another one of the issues, how do you implement this? Do you implement it immediately, and from now on, there's no sibling transfer, sibling preference, or does it go? Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt, just to clarify, our recommendation is that there are no longer neighborhood to neighborhood transfers through the lottery, hardship petitions will always be an important part, so just, and the reason that sibling preference isn't in there is that we really need to hear from broad communities before we, as a group, can even start to land, so don't think we didn't think about that.
No, I'm just saying the things that I didn't see that I'm interested in, so that's great, thank you very much for that. I was intrigued by everybody's interest in the Benson bucket, or Benson, I always say Benson balancer, I think Benson bubblers, you know? Because I think that's also an intriguing solution, and have been kind of a proponent of that for quite some time, so I was very happy to see it this year. You like the bubbler? Okay. And then, I would be interested in, if you have research, or are you looking into other school districts on some of these issues, you know, what, what do lotteries look like in other districts, especially districts that seem to be doing them successfully? What does, what's a total choice district look like? I was reading some information not too long ago, I think it was about Denver, you know, what does it, what does it look like if there are no neighborhood boundaries? Or go the other way, what does it look like if there are total neighborhood boundaries? So I'm kind of interested in more information that you all gather on that, and the examples that you can provide to us. And then finally, I think, and I saw it a little bit in your report, I think that one of the issues for us as a board is K-8, K-5, middle schools. I think that continues to be an issue in our community. How long has it been? Ten, ten years? I think I saw that, it's been quite a while, but it, it still comes up consistently, especially when, I can't remember if it was in the PSU report or in this report, but about enrollment and the ability to provide program, especially in our K-8s, so I think that's an issue that will play into this as well. And then finally, I do want to thank you for your work again, and I echo Director Belial about when we finish this work, I don't know if this work is ever finished, but when we finish this part, I hope that we will be able to have you as people who are working with us to see this to the end, and can be our ambassadors in the community, as well as us supporting the recommendations that you made, because you are the community that we have gathered to help us make these decisions, and that's very important to us, so, I think that's it. Thank you very, very much.
I'd like to say something to, something that Director Belial asked, last time that you asked about, how representative are the decisions that we make, and do we look for consensus? So I just wanted to tell you that this is a super committed group, obviously, thirty meetings, and they're still here, still standing, and it's a super committed group who has a lot of strong opinions, and we have also gone through the courageous conversations about race training, so we are all very familiar with the concept of multiple perspectives, and this group brings them multiple perspectives, and we honor them all. So, we did not look for consensus, we looked for where consensus existed, but we didn't force it, so just to let you know that all perspectives were brought forward, honored, and presented in the report.
That's great, thank you.
Actually, the other thing I'd add to that is people, I've witnessed people moving each other, so even where people came in with really, you know, strong beliefs of what they thought they believed, people are really listening to other perspectives that are emerging in the course of the discussions, and, and it's moved, I mean, people's thought process has really evolved as being part of this committee, so I have been impressed with that, so. I'm gonna just add one other thing, because we're about ready to segue into part two, which is the district-wide boundary review is, so Sackett was specifically looking at our enrollment and transfer policies, but they will, have also been cross-informing each other as we're getting, doing the analysis of how we develop a process to do a district-wide boundary review, so this has been like parallel processes, but informing one another intentionally, so, and the fact that we're hearing both of those reports here tonight, really important, because you're gonna feel the connectivity here between the two processes. And the last one I'll say is, the distinction between the five years that Sackett has been together as a body, and the, this charge is just the last fifteen months, so they've not been working on this charge for five years, this charge was the last fifteen months. No, the five years means we've had a group trying to grapple with enrollment transfer issues over a period of five years, but the last thing they really developed recommendations about was high school system design, and you can feel continuity of themes in terms of strong desire for strong neighborhood schools as a really core value in both of these processes, so it's been helpful to have people who've been immersed in this, and immersed in the complexity of this, informing both processes, so. So thank you very much for your report, and I'm hoping you're sticking around for part two here, so, thanks.
Great, thank you both. Thank you to the whole committee.
Okay, so, next, actually Judy Brennan and John Isaacs are gonna come on up again. We've got a number of people, so Phil Keisling, and Wendy Willis, and Shannon Grzbowski, whose name I can't really say well, but both from the Portland State University Center for Public Service and the National Policy Consensus Center, who have been partnering with PPS to look at how we would approach and what's an organizational and stakeholder readiness assessment.
Excuse me, I'll wait for the side talk to be completed.
We were gonna take a short break.
Oh, were you? Do you want to take a short break?
If, I would like to, is that?
Then let's, can we do that? Let's do that, yeah, yeah.
Just give them a couple of minutes to come down, just like three minutes is what we need.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry.
As we've referenced a couple of times, I don't think my mic is working. Actually, we're trying to get maybe the audio stream back in here, so I'm just gonna check if my mic is turned on.
So Carol's mic is not working?
Is my mic on? There we go, all right. Okay, as, one of the things we've referenced multiple times through this conversation is at the end, so Jefferson enrollment balancing was the last time we actually looked, and we've done this cluster by cluster across the district, but during the Jefferson enrollment and balancing conversation, we concluded with the, the strong sentiment that what we needed to do is really look at this district-wide, which is like both daunting and right. So what we did was, we said, okay, we've got to figure out how we would go about looking at boundaries as an entire district holistically. So what we did was, we approached Portland State Center for Public Service and said, would you think about this with us and partner with us, and we explored it a little bit, and then they agreed to come on as a partner and really help us pick apart what it would actually take for us to do this, and give us some options about how we might do the process. So we've just completed with them and with the National Policy Consensus Center, the first phase of this project, looking at what the process is that we would use. So tonight, we're gonna walk through that assessment, that's both a stakeholder and organizational readiness assessment, which is phase one, and John Isaacs and Judy Brennan will walk us through and introduce the players to come on up and talk to us more about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, so again, I'm John Isaacs, I'm the Chief of Communications and Public Affairs, and it's my pleasure to introduce Phil Keisling, who's the Executive Director of the Portland State University Center for Public Service, Wendy Willis, who's the Director of the National Policy Consensus Center, and Shannon Grzbowski, who was the, sort of the person who kept the whole process moving as we worked on this assessment, she's a graduate student in the Mark Hatfield School of Government. I just want to say that I really appreciated the board's comments about Sackett and it being a model for how we do community involvement around a tough issue. It's absolutely correct, and I would say that the work that the PSU team has done on this readiness assessment for district-wide boundary review is a model for how we partner with outside experts on how we can best tackle a very, a truly difficult and challenging topic such as district-wide boundary review. The report is incredible report, that makes very strong recommendations, that involves every part of the PPS community and stakeholders, and it's something that I personally learned a lot from, and I encourage everybody who's watching tonight to read it, because it will really tells you where we're headed as a district, and makes the case for why we have to be looking at district-wide boundary review. So with that, I want to invite the team up here, and they will walk you through your report and answer your questions.
Good evening, members of the board, I'm Phil Keisling, this is Wendy Willis, and Shannon Grzbowski is here to answer questions after we get done with the brief presentation. We, of course, are here with the second catalog that you have plopped on your table tonight. It, of course, follows Sackett's truly excellent report, which recommended a number of specific policy changes and directions, in contrast, our work is focused on process, and compared to Sackett's journey to date with district-wide boundary review, we're still at the suitcase, suitcase packing stage with this one. But as Sackett's important work illustrates, district-wide boundary review is inevitably intertwined with enrollment and transfer, not to mention many other policies. How can we best use existing and new school facilities? What's the right size and configuration of particular programs? How do we ensure sufficient resources and educational quality to all neighborhood-based schools and other schools, and their diversity of students? Just a few of the questions, and the complexity is at times mind-numbing, as one person described it, it's like a Rubik's Cube, except the colors keep changing on you. Now, PPS has made dozens of school boundary adjustments in recent years, in many cases amidst wrenching decisions about neighborhood school closures and reconfigurations, but this is PPS's first district-wide boundary review in recent memory, and we've appreciated the chance to work with the district on this relatively new and uncharted terrain. Our full report can be divided into roughly two main sections. First, the organizational readiness assessment for embarking on this journey. So we closely examined their demographic changes, board policies and rules, and data related to PPS enrollment and attendance, and looked at the experience of fourteen other districts in Oregon and around the US. Second, how best to engage the larger Portland community in this important task? We conducted dozens of meetings representing twenty-one organizations and involving more than a hundred community members. I'll focus on the first set of issues, and Wendy will focus on the latter. But first, the brief answers to three very core questions. Does PPS really have to do district-wide boundary review? Absolutely yes. As an organization, is PPS ready? Not quite yet, but it can and must be soon. And perhaps most important, how does the larger Portland public school community view this challenge? Well, as Wendy will elaborate, we found respondents, many of them unclear about the need and purpose, a bit wary, even skeptical about the district, but open to meaningful engagement provided the district is clear about its goals and earns their trust. So to the first question, the clear even urgent need for district-wide boundary review. We know about projected K through twelve enrollments. Today, they're three thousand above what we thought just six or seven years ago. By 2017, 18, the district might top fifty thousand students, within a decade, fifty-five thousand or more are plausible. Now, this is happy news, and it's driven by important and relatively recent changes. Is it more people deciding not to attend private school and other options? No, that's held pretty steady. But what demographers note is that young adults aren't just choosing to move to and remain in urban settings like Portland in record numbers. Most significantly, they're having children markedly later in their lives, and thus no longer leaving in relative droves for the suburbs once that happens. They're staying put and choosing to send their kids to public, Portland public schools. Drop down to the school cluster and individual school levels, and the need for boundary review becomes even clearer. Almost forty percent of Portland public school students now attend a school that, based on current definition- definitions and use, are either over-enrolled or under-enrolled vis-à-vis what's considered appropriate for quality program and reach. Neighborhood school capture rates vary considerably. 11 schools are attracting 80% or more of their neighborhood students that are enrolled in Portland Public School, yet seven at the other end attract 50% or fewer. And the total enrolled population within these neighborhood school catchment areas vary even more dramatically. In five, there are 300 or fewer students within this geographic area, while four contain more than 700 students and one with over 1,000. Decades of boundary adjustments, largely driven by declining enrollments and then often only when other options seem exhausted, have left a map of widely varying mismatches between student enrollments and the physical capacity of actual buildings, and between school configuration and program resources and optimal size. Second, as to readiness. Even under the best of circumstances, district-wide boundary review poses a tough and difficult set of challenges. To successfully navigate the community concerns, administrative complexities, and controversies inherent in this, the first priority is for Portland Public Schools to display clarity and alignment of its own internal policies, procedures, and roles, so that it can then construct a clear and well-executed process, a deliberate community engagement, and transparent decision-making. Much of this clarity yet doesn't exist, or at least, and this is perhaps more important, is not seen to exist by a wide swath of parents and community members. In the past, sometimes PPS has relied on short-term facility-based changes to deal with enrollment pressures, thereby avoiding controversial boundary adjustments or larger changes. This has led some community members, quote, "We're not over-enrolled, we're under facility," as one put it during a public meeting, to embrace the false notion that school boundaries somehow can or should be permanent, when just the opposite is true. In other cases, reconfiguration of school grade levels has been used to help balance enrollment, and still others, the policy tool of creating, locating special focus programs, an approach that might relieve overcrowding in some school clusters while increasing the use of otherwise vacant classrooms. But it can also lead to concerns, as the SACIT report demonstrates, about undermining neighborhood-based programs and making worse the district's challenges on goals such as racial and educational equity policy. Regardless of the educational merits of such decisions, over the years, a clear patchwork has emerged, not to mention many community members believing that the final results are too often based not on what's best for the entire system, but on which community has more ability to articulate their grievances and mobilize political pressure to minimize disruption as a way to get things done. So this need for internal clarity and alignment is underscored by looking at the experiences in 14 other districts here and across the country. No, we didn't find a playbook that says how to succeed at district-wide boundary review without really trying. There isn't one. But we heard many common themes, whether we look in Hillsborough or Salem-Kaiser here in Oregon, or to places like Tampa, Seattle, Denver, Minneapolis, or elsewhere. Some of those themes: adopt values with community input that's genuine, and be patient with the process to ensure that that community input is truly reflective of the community at large, not just its best organized and articulate components. Let values in a strong citizen-led group or groups precede even the proposing of any specific boundary lines and maps. Fully understand your facility and program needs and challenges before launching so you can articulate what's in and maybe what's outside bounds before the discussion starts. And have at hand readily accessible data and key information in a format that's digestible and that community members can be expected to ask for. PPS has a huge and great capability around data, so much of this already exists, but how do you put it into the right format? So how quickly can the process be launched and concluded? That depends on how PSU leadership explicitly chooses the scope and reach of the process. A report offers a continuum of options on one end, to see this primarily as a mathematical challenge, a data-driven process mainly to rebalance student enrollments that are out of whack, and many are, and some crisis situations exist. At a different end of the continuum, a much more robust community engagement process that brings in not just the potential implications of issues like transfer and enrollment, but school configurations, capture rates, special focus program, and of course, the district's racial and educational equity mission. I think the easiest approach, a 2015-16 school year implementation date, might well be practicable, but a more robust process, we believe, would likely take longer. Again, the options we discussed are hardly exhaustive, but we recommend that the leadership of Portland Public Schools decide on that by this fall school year. Finally, before turning it over to Wendy, a word about how once is not enough. Yes, it will be hard and contentious, but in addition to finalizing the next boundaries for the district, it's important to build a framework capable of dealing with ongoing boundary adjustments year in and year out. Community members should expect future boundary adjustments as Portland changes and as the needs and makeup of the community change, but also have confidence that such reviews will operate according to agreed-upon and advanced values, criteria, and rules. So while there will be contention and debate and disagreement, there will not be surprises in a sense of getting off the rails. I'll now turn it over to my colleague Wendy Willis to describe in a bit more detail the community interviews we conducted, and more on thoughts and observations on how best to engage the community in this important task.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil, and thank you for having us this evening. Many of the things I'm going to tell you and that are reflected in the report are implicit in the remarks that Phil just made and some of the recommendations, but I think probably some of the things that you might be most interested in are what the community had to say about this process, so I thought I would give you a little bit more detail about that. First of all, I want to remind you that the interviews that we did over the last few months and the 100 people that we talked to was not the engagement itself, but was rather to try to talk to a broad range of people in a very short period of time about how they thought the community would like to be engaged in this process and the readiness of the community to be involved. So I will remind you of that. It was not an exhaustive set of interviews, but it was somewhat representative. So to reiterate, Phil had to say that the community largely is willing to engage with Portland Public Schools and is eager to have input on district-wide boundary review, and that's particularly among community members who feel like they have something particular to gain or lose. In other words, who thinks that their school or school community might be affected directly by the initial set of boundary changes. That said, though, there's kind of a mixed level of understanding of both what district-wide boundary review might mean and what it might mean for them. Because it's not been a part of standard practice, there's a wide range of definitions about what district-wide boundary review might be, and we heard from a number of community members and families that if they were to get involved and they were to ask their community members to participate, it would have to clearly be tied to academic opportunity, and how does boundary review affect academic opportunity? Also, we found that, as Phil mentioned, that people are interested in the whole academic opportunity for their child, so boundary review and enrollment and transfer are intertwined for them, and distinguishing between the two of them was not something that people were really particularly interested in doing. And in the bad news department, some of that willingness and eagerness to participate is based somewhat by opportunity, but largely by fear and mistrust. In each conversation, past district decisions were raised, particularly the one that Director Knowles pointed out about the decision to go to K to eight schools. So that is something that was mentioned in virtually every conversation, and I think you can expect that will be mentioned again in any broad community engagement that is to happen. There also is a craving for clear sideboards to any engagement, what's in bounds and what's out of bounds, and what the input will mean. So transparency would be central, and I think that's one of the main reasons why we recommended a phase of really trying to figure out some alignment within the district before going out to a broad community process. And again, to reiterate, there's a belief that even if the process is perfect and is designed ideally, that communities with power and influence can work around that process and get what they need in the end. So there's that sort of perception to overcome in any process that's designed and executed. I think there's a similar concern that boundary review alone cannot address equity concerns. There's widespread concern about opportunity gap, but wondering what boundary review can do without addressing school offering, school configuration, enrollment and transfer as well, so that those additional concerns are on the table. Finally, even though there is a willingness to engage and a broad willingness to engage, the infrastructure to do so and to do so quickly is mixed. So some schools and some communities are in a position to respond very quickly if there is a process that's designed to be executed between now and next winter. That is not uniform across buildings, obviously, across communities. So historically underrepresented, and communities of color have a variety of capacities to participate in this because of issues like mistrust, issues like previous decisions. So I think that's when Phil says patience is key. Some of that is to rebuild some of the trust amongst communities and the district. So given that, what happens over the next 90 days to help inform your decision about which, along this continuum, what's the best thing to do about district-wide boundary review? What we hope to do in the next 90 days is work with key PPS staff and hopefully all of you to align the goals for any public process and to make a recommendation on what's most feasible and productive for community engagement, given the goals that you all decide on. Similarly, continue conversations with the members of SACIT to determine what their future work will be and to see if we can align outreach and engagement efforts where appropriate. That's especially true given that the intertwined nature of boundary review and enrollment and transfer in the public's treatment of the issues. To create a data packet that has easy access to facts and policies for reference that will influence the public's participation in any process that goes forward. Finally, to be, in anticipation of some process, begin working on expanding the community organizing infrastructure. That means go deeper into determining where there is organizing capacity and where there are gaps, so that if and when PPS begins a community engagement process, there will be an infrastructure in place across all communities that ensures equal access to the process. In particular, we will be asking communities how they would like to be engaged around this issue and similar ones in the future. So with that, we welcome any questions and comments, feedback, and suggestions that you might have.
For the members? Anybody? Yes. Or a law one?
Thank you again for this report, and I'm not going to go into all my comments, but I really appreciated all the areas that you highlighted as far as the issues that we face with community trust. The feedback that you heard, I'm not sure where you got it, but that the board potentially expressed an interest in using this as a reset to rebuild that trust in how we engage differently with our community. So I just really appreciate that whole option. But I just had a, what I think might be a quick question. I think, Wendy, you just said that the community isn't interested or doesn't really see a difference between district boundary review and enrollment and transfer, which I think is true with the public, like they all, it's part of the same question for them. So the question is, do you have a recommendation or thoughts about, because they're going to come to us with recommendations potentially a year before we have our act together to go out to the community within district-wide boundary? Should those two align? Because we're artificially forcing the two apart. Do you have thoughts?
My take on that is that hopefully the next 90 days will be telling in that, and it may be that there are recommendations that SACIT brings forward that really aren't as intertwined as some of the others. And so, you know, I can imagine a scenario where some of the questions that SACIT is grappling with are part of district-wide boundary review, and some are going forward in a package for a decision right away. So I think, and I think that's a question we would like feedback from you on. That's really a decision that you'll have to make and that Superintendent Smith will need to make about how you want to parse those things. I think the thing we're here to tell you, though, is as parents and decision-makers for kids, people don't see those things as distinct.
Others? No? Sure? No questions?
So thank you so much for this really meaty and insightful report, another one, the second one of the night, so great. And I think, you know, for me, I really appreciated your articulation and reminder that we need to get that internal clarity and to get our values and policy framework established, as well as the sideboards, as you call it, for what is and what isn't going to be on the table, established and clear with ourselves, with staff, and the public before we go forth in whatever timeframe it might be. So that was really helpful, exactly the kind of external kind of reality check and expertise that we were looking for from you, so I really appreciate that. And again, you know, just my concern being that just the way the timing worked out, that we are going into the traditional downtime for the district for rare, I think the one time I can recall of really significant summertime community engagement was around the superintendent search process when we went out. It actually had lovely, a bit warm, but lovely meetings that were very effective because we got an awesome summertime. We heard what type of person the community wanted through that process. So it's not normal practice for us to be taking on almost anything, let alone something of this magnitude after what has been a pretty exhausting and challenging and huge year for this district. So I'm just, it's just that note of caution and concern of wanting to keep this momentum going, but how do we do that? I want to make sure that we figure out, and that we, too, don't slack off. So I guess, you know, I know the co-chairs and the superintendent have already been talking about this, but just wanted to really be clear that we're going to very soon have kind of mapped out what are our work sessions or times together to figure this out going to be, so that we can reach your recommended drop-dead date of September to get this figured out of how we're going to proceed and what kind of the roadmap is going to be. So that's my big piece, and I think, you know, really to be able to do, to talk about the enrollment balancing with the racial equity lens, thinking about who is affected by, so I'm just, you know, you talked about districts that did mathematical models and did many of them, and then were able to win on them down, and just trying to figure out is there a way to do that process that combines sort of the mathematical with the qualitative equity lens of who is affected by this, who would be, you know, what would be unintended consequences of it. But again, until we have done that upfront work of figuring out the clarity and of purpose from what we're trying to accomplish and what our values are, we can't get into that, into the maps and into the analysis. Trying to think of anything else I wanted to say. I think that was, oh, the other piece, too, would be, and I'm sure you're going to do this, but just as we go, very soon, to have a reminder from staff about what were those most absolutely critical, particularly over enrollment, schools where it was really the most urgent need. So again, trying to, as we try to wrestle with that, move quickly to relieve the most urgent issues versus take longer to do the process right, and yet we're not doing it right if we're leaving those schools hanging for another whole year after telling them we're going to get to it, we're going to get to it. So that was, you know, the real conundrum in reading your report, of trying to figure needing to weigh in together and with staff and with you all to try to figure out what is that best pathway forward, what timing would make the most sense.
Thank you. Excellent. Matt?
Thank you very much. I think I have a couple of comments. One, you've said some highly inflammatory things, one being that it isn't just a one-time thing, enrollment balancing. And the other one is sort of the, the boundaries are not something that's permanent. And I think both of those things are going to force us into answering an important question, and that is, how tolerant is our community with change? And how tolerant are we with discomfort? And I think in terms of our district and our leadership on the board, it's going to be the same question. How tolerant are we with discomfort and change? And I would encourage us at this point to be open about and maybe bring in some tolerance to that. There's another thing that I wanted to mention, too, that I think is a really important one, and that is, Phil, you mentioned sort of the massive amount of data and information that we have access to, and really a that we have access to and really a, an unclear and unprecise and, and understandable mechanism to deliver that information to the community. And I think that is, I want to point that out because I think that's, that's a concern that I hear over and over again. And I think, I'm pointing it out because I think we have a real sincere obligation as a, as an organization to provide information in a clear, concise way to our community that, that is digestible and that people can understand. And in, in that obligation, I think it really comes down, in my opinion, to customer service. Who are we serving and how are we providing that, that service makes a difference. But I want to say, I appreciate, and that, all of this is going to be, you know, the discomfort is going to be probably even more uncomfortable because of some of the trust issues that you've, you've brought up, that I think we're all, we all talk about it. I think we're all aware of it. The other piece that I think is going to be helpful for me is knowing some of these dynamics exist. I'm a proponent of if we're not good at something, how can we engage either organizations or partners who can help us achieve that, that outcome? And what you're asking, I think, is really a, an outcome that is desperately needed and one that we're going to have as an organization, we're going to have a hard time achieving because of some of those issues that you described. So who do we engage in the process? And maybe it's you all, but who do we engage in the process around community engagement, around really creating some authenticity behind how we, how we communicate our data, how we communicate the issues and the challenges, whether they be conflicting or supportive of one another? So that's my sort of out there question of who can help us do that?
Tom?
All I'll say is thank you. I mean, you really, you told it like you saw it, and that's important for us. And I think you've, you've laid out a great roadmap for us to go and continue on. So thank you.
I would also say thank you. And I think that as a board member, I'm looking forward to, even though I won't be a part of it next year, I'm looking forward to a lot of soul searching by this board, especially in relation to this work, about where you all actually see the direction of this district being under your leadership. And it should be a really eventful summer.
Andrew will be attending PSU though, so.
You run, but can't hide.
He'd make a great intern. He already knows all about it.
Bobby, do you have any?
It looks to me like you've laid out three different potential timelines or timeframes for us getting our work done. And I'm curious if this is going to be part of a summer retreat discussion that we kind of delve into that. Two of them would have us voting and making changes by September 2015. One would be voting and making changes by September 2016. And I think, given what you're describing in terms of the level of community support or understanding or trust, I mean, my immediate reaction is that we need more time to do listening sessions and talking with our community in a variety of things. But it sounds like we're going to have another opportunity to delve into the timing and where we're at on that. So there was one thing that you didn't talk about, which I read in here with great excitement, which was you talked about Denver and the fact that in Denver, the enrollment in Denver is just skyrocketing for a variety of reasons. But it was the one district where you mentioned that part of the reason for the skyrocketing enrollment is that they've increased their graduation rates.
Yes, isn't that interesting?
It was awesome.
I think in Denver, they have something like 2,000 more students that they attribute simply to the increase in the, in the high school completion rate. And, you know, that's another happy circumstance that you would want to strive for, but that could further complicate district-wide boundary review because of more people and catchment areas. But yes.
And I just don't know that we've really looked at that as being a, a factor, but that would be a really happy circumstance to have to deal with. Thank you.
So I just, I have a couple more questions. One, you highlighted how different our population in the sense of, just in terms of numbers, we have more students than was projected five years ago. I think you said the number was 3,000. I don't remember off the top of my head. And I've often heard, and I know this isn't under your purview or in your shop, so I'm going to tell you what I hear from the community is that PSU's enrollment projections are really challenging, that they don't give us the data that we need. You highlighted a little bit about the different demographic that's moving into the city, having students later. But as we talk about this, we know the future, change is constant. Do you have any thoughts about how we plan with that demographic in mind, but really not knowing how many students?
Two, we do make in the report the disclaimer that though the Population Research Center is part of PSU as well, we're not formally associated.
Just to be clear.
But in defense of, of work that, that, that we know there's controversy about, but the change that is at the heart of this demographic change is something that is happening in many other communities. Seattle is a great example. And the same thing has kind of happened, where demographers have, have missed this, the rapidity and scope of this change. So to give you an example, in 1990, just 30% of the births within Portland were to women 30 and older. By 2009, generation later, it was more than 54%. And a near doubling in the decision to have children later when you're more settled in a community and thus not leave and the like, really was, and there was a wake-up call in 2009, actually, and maybe the recession might have had something to do with it. But you had, I think, 300 more kindergarten students show up and you had 300 fewer births. And so what's happening? So one of the things we talk about in the report about information is that if you're forced to rely solely on quantitative information, you got to get more and more sophisticated about it, and I think the tools are better. And I know PRC is working more with Portland Bureau of Sustainability, looking at building permit issues, how do apartment patterns change, but also qualitative information. Having a better capacity in a district that has 48,000 students, 5,000 employees, probably 100,000 plus parents and, and custodial people in kids' lives, to really monitor the qualitative assessments of people who are making decisions, keeping their kids in school, deciding to go there, transferring for what reasons. An organization of your size, complexity and, and import ought to do more than just rely on the quantitative data. And I think that's going to help you a lot to see those early warning devices. The other thing that the value and information in digestible chunks in Denver is another place to, to look to for some of that, is giving communities a chance to understand these dynamics over maybe a five or 10-year period of time. The core ones, how people are choosing other programs rather than the neighborhood school, looking at assessments of, of how schools are doing, and I know that's tricky. But to give them the ability then to see those trends over time clearly and simply, and then organize to try to do something about it. Maybe go door-to-door literally and, and talk to people whose, whose kids are getting ready to go to school. So those are some thoughts about how to keep a better kind of bead on this and not be surprised. Because demographics can change as quickly in the opposite direction as they have in, in one. And, and, and demographers, though there's a lot of power in that, are, are limited, unfortunately, by just some of the available data.
Just to follow up too, I think the, the point that Director Morton made a few minutes ago about adaptability, creating a community culture of adaptability, knowing that demographic changes can, can happen rapidly, and even if you, even if you have a good prediction district-wide, in a, on a cluster-by-cluster basis, things change, whether it's housing patterns or building or whatever. And so if the, if the community has an expectation that boundaries are going to change, that really makes a big difference in, in what kind of tools are available to you all in making those decisions over time.
Right.
I was going to say Beverly Cleary, which is one of the most active issues before the school district now. The main reason of the increase over six years ago is a far higher percentage of people living within the neighborhood have decided to stay within the neighborhood. It's gone from about 45%, we're exiting to other programs, now it's down to about 25%. And in that is that real pressure on enrollment. The irony there is that there are still over 240 students living within Beverly Cleary's neighborhood school catchment area who next fall could in theory say, oh, I think we'll stay. So those are some of the things at the, at the school level to also be very, very mindful of, and, and every situation in community has, has differences.
That was a good segue, and I think you just gave Ms. Geist a heart attack. But I just, I wanted to express appreciation for talk about qualitative measures. And it was just another place where I saw, and again, you highlighted here about the, the capacity of staff to even pay attention to this, that it was just clear we don't have the capacity. You see the same people involved in many different areas. And again, it's a central resource piece. Of course, we should be out doing surveys and we prioritized, obviously, pushing services to classrooms, that we don't have this big organization just figuring out, how does our community feel about us? Why are they moving? Why are they doing this? But through the enrollment processes, I've heard interest in us developing that piece about why do people make the choice to move? Why do people make the choice? So I appreciated you highlighting that. And the last thing I want to say that again struck me with the juxtaposition, both I heard in you and I heard in SACIT's report, this, this belief, this higher priority of strength of the system trumps the individual. And what I'm struck by that is, right, you were here for the, I'm not sure if you were here for the public testimony that began about, we have a middle school that's making a schedule change, and it said, how dare, how dare you change us to, to systematize? And so I'm just struck by that natural tension that, that exists, is how do we keep the whole of the system strong because it's important, because it does affect every individual? At the same time, and we also heard our PAT president say, but Portland is unique, we are different, that's what we pride ourselves are. So to your point about how do we educate our community and how do we engage to know what that looks like and what are the issues that those both present, again, I just really appreciate you highlighting. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of comments. I know, I'm always last and everybody gets up as soon as I say thank you. So, you know, I think a lot of people have been focusing on stakeholder and community engagement, but I really am more interested at the get-go here on the organizational capacity and readiness point. And I would echo Greg's comments about whether our internal capacity, whether we really have that, given the tremendous cuts that we've gone through at the administrative level here in this building over the last seven years, been huge. And I'm, so one of my concerns is, how do we build that capacity? And I would, I just because not everybody has this report in front of them, I would just call out a couple of things here. And one is building internal clarity and alignment among and between key PPS officials before embarking on this district-wide initiative. I think that's something that's very important for us. And then additional resources and clarifications of expectations and roles would build the internal capacity necessary. I think both of those things are things that we want to be sure we're looking at. And then the other part, or I guess maybe the beginning of all of this, goes back to the same issues that we were talking about with SACIT, and that is really what are we looking for? What is the most important piece? What, what is our policy around our schools? Is it neighborhood schools is the, is the priority? Or is it educational equity policy? Is that our number one priority? Or is it a combination? But I think we as a board, with the help of our community, need to make a firm stand about what that's going to be before we can move forward on any of this other, any of these other steps. And then the other part, and this is a call out to my colleagues, there are two categories that are having to do with us tying our strategies to policies and goals by creating board-level policies, policy guidance to staff as to which options to consider first. I mean, that, that's what we need to do. We don't have that policy. And as a result, the next piece in here says, tie strategies and policies to goals by creating board-level policy, guidance to staff as to which options to consider first. PPS now has an opportunity to clearly tie actions and strategies to its district-wide goals and policy. Without clear policy principles and transparent decision-making, PPS may make political decisions rather than goal-oriented policy decisions for district-wide boundary review. And I think that is a very big danger for us and why it's so important that we as a board make sure that we have those policies in place and why I'm looking forward to SACIT's report and why I'm looking forward to working with all of you. And then finally, on stakeholder and community engagement, the timelines that you guys gave us, you know, the longer period of time, of course, looks good. But in, in all of them, I was missing, what is the timeframe you're looking at or what do you think is a reasonable amount of time that it will take us to do the organizational capacity and readiness so that we can then move into the stakeholder engagement? Because most of your, most of your chart has to do with stakeholder engagement. And it doesn't, doesn't talk about building our internal capacity in order to do that.
So I think the assumption is that by the time school starts next year, that the internal, the internal alignment needs to be there. And if it isn't, that answers some of the questions about what, you know, what's feasible for the next school year.
So we need a report from SACIT. Keep going, you guys.
Board retreat to, I think some of the summer work.
Hopefully two board retreats coming up this summer and, and then just continuing that work.
Sounds like all of us will be busy this summer.
This is not a restful summer, no. Any other comments, you guys? Comments here?
Thank you for all your.
Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are just a little bit behind, but not too bad. So our next agenda item is a presentation by our community education partners and on PPS discipline data. There are actually two parts to the presentation. First, we'll hear from our community education partners, who I see many of you at in the audience, who will provide a report and recommendations. And then we'll hear from our PPS staff on the goals to reduce exclusionary discipline. Superintendent Smith, you have more to tell us?
Actually, no, I'm just going to turn it right over to community education partners and say that we've got many partners in the room tonight here and a lot of people who've been engaged in this discussion. And then I'll follow them with some of what the district internal discussions have been and how we're going about trying to goal set collaboratively here in terms of setting realistic goals and targets.
Hi. I'm Kathy Gordon. And a member of CEP, have been for seven years. For most of that time on CEP, I represented juvenile justice. And my role with juvenile justice was to get the most at-risk kids back into school, kids who were on probation. Since I retired from juvenile justice, I now volunteer at Helen's View High School as a mentor teacher. Some of you may know Helen's View is one of the schools that, that PPS contracts with through MESD. And for many kids, it's like the last chance. Well, last Thursday, I got to go to their graduation, which was really exciting. 60 kids graduated and Margaret Carter delivered the keynote speech. Why I would say delivered, she danced it mostly. It was pretty incredible. There were 800 people, 800 people there for the graduation. And the most inspiring speeches from the kids, I mean, the obstacles. But see, those were the lucky kids, because pretty much all those kids were pushed out of school in some way or another. They found their way back somehow and they were managed to graduate. So it was quite inspiring. In preparation for tonight's presentation, because I don't have a lot going on in my life, I watched the video of last April's board meeting. You guys remember that? April, I think April 1st or something? And with the, this issue of exclusionary discipline was dealt with. Doradka Atkins, you had a lot, a lot of questions specifically at that time. I was here, but then I also reminded myself. Here are some of the questions. There were, what are we, when are we going to make this, and by this, I mean exclusionary discipline and disparities the priority, and recognize the urgency? Are we holding principals accountable for their discipline data during their evaluations? Why aren't we seeing more movement than we are seeing? And then there were expressions of frustration. If, if what we're doing isn't working, shouldn't we use the resources in other ways? And you expressed collectively that you were tired of hearing, we're doing better. And, and concerns were raised about whether voluntary compliance on the part of principals was really enough. Unfortunately, these questions are still relevant today. The data indicates the disparities are still great, but... And, and concerns were raised about whether voluntary compliance on the part of principals was really enough. Unfortunately, these questions are still relevant today. The data indicates that disparities are still great, but the time is ripe for change and for leadership. From you and from Superintendent Smith, in two meetings last month, or the month, right the month before, you mentioned that school discipline and disparities were one of your three top priorities. One, other one being high school graduation rates, which is so closely related to this issue. And that's the kind of leadership that we need to see. CEP is here tonight to present you with an opportunity to initiate and embrace change. There are two presenters here from CEP, one on either side of me. Christina Albo, on my right, is from Resolutions Northwest, and she's going to describe CEP's involvement and journey with PPS during the last seven years, really, on exclusionary discipline and lessons learned. Sheila, on my left, is Sheila Warren, is from Portland Parents Union, longtime member of CEP. For several years, Sheila has, Sheila and PPU, Portland Parents Union, has been associated with a movement called the National Dignity in Schools Movement, which advocates for a moratorium on pushout. It's a strong and admirable model that requires planning and buy-in from all stakeholders, and I say all stakeholders. CEP is following PPU's lead in calling for a broad-based moratorium as a way to promote significant change. So, please listen closely to these presenters. I know it's late, or you're an hour behind, it's a long evening, but listen closely, because I'm sure you're aware that there's a national groundswell now for this issue. Arne Duncan, President Obama's Chief of Education, and education, let's see. Understand that at all times emotion, that sometimes emotions may run high, because for many people, this is a very, very personal issue with a lot of, lot at stake. Think about how you, as a school leader, can actively ensure that PPS policies and practices give all children equal access to an education. And finally, imagine with me that, in, in the morning, waking up and opening the Oregonian, and instead of seeing articles that say, "Oregon is fourth from the bottom in graduation rates," or "Fifth from the bottom with absenteeism," that we can open up the paper and say, "Portland Public Schools declares an end to unnecessary and unfair school pushout." Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. My name is Christina Albo, as Kathy mentioned, and I work with Resolutions Northwest, which is one of the community partners and community education partners. And I'm going to share with you a little bit of what our journey has been with PPS in the last seven years, and try to manage this at the same time. Community Education Partners is a broad-based coalition of organizations that works as a catalyst to change the educational system and stands united to ensure the personal success and academic achievement of all children. The primary work of our, the focus of our work since 2006 has been to end the disparities in the treatment of people of color in Portland Public Schools. For nearly ten years, we have been advocating for an end to the disparities in discipline, and sadly, the disparities remain. It was urgent in 2006, and it's even more urgent today. Exclusionary discipline is a key measurable part of disparate treatment of children of color in our public schools. These disparities hurt. Students kicked out of school, even temporarily, suffer both in academic achievement and overall well-being. CEP originally asked PPS to prioritize reducing discipline disparities through, number one, writing a district-wide policy that publicly calls for a reduction in disparities in discipline actions, creating a specific, specific reduction targets and timelines, identifying target schools and implementing best practices, and prioritizing and developing alternative practices to suspensions and expulsions, and include, importantly, parents, guardians, families, and youth in that process. We wanted to share with you, from our perspective, what progress has been made with regards to CEP's asks. PPS did indeed adopt a policy which acknowledges, one, that disproportionate discipline practices exist in PPS and impact youth of color and families of color in that system, and that there is a clear connection between exclusionary discipline and academic success. PPS also adopted the Relative Rate Index, which common, is commonly referred to as the RRI, to more accurately capture this data. PPS identified a set of schools with high disparity rates and connected CEP to those schools, and PPS has supported incorporating alternatives to exclusion, exclusion such as PBIS and restorative justice. So, what have we learned over the past six years, given these efforts to address our asks? What we learned is that the guide to policies, rules, and procedures on student responsibilities, rights, and discipline does not reflect the spirit of the board policies and administrative directives, and therefore, building practices have remained largely exclusionary. School improvement plans are not an effective leather, lever for setting targets and timelines around creating change in discipline practice. Families and youth most impacted by disparities in discipline are not included in decision-making or solution-seeking practices. And increased communication with PPS policymakers and transparent, transparent data are pivotal to ensuring productive steps towards actual change in school discipline processes. And we have seen that data and transparency sort of ebb and flow, and it has not been largely distributed to the community. What else did we learn? A year and a half into our two-year pilot project with the specific schools identified, CEP worked with the district to distribute a survey of teachers' views on discipline practices and changes in their schools. Three schools responded. Two findings in particular stood out. In these three schools, chosen because of their racial disparities in exclusionary data, the hard numbers, less than half of the teachers thought that students of colors are excluded at a different rate from white students. Furthermore, teachers varied widely in their awareness that the school was even participating in a pilot project to reduce those very disparities in discipline. In one school, four out of five teachers knew, whereas in another school, only a third of the teachers knew. So, we're here today with some new specific asks. Given that despite the efforts, those disparities in disciplines remain staggering. So, the first one is to make disproportionate discipline practices an urgent and top district priority. Now is the time. Communicate this with schools and schools' communities to invite their participation in addressing the issue. Develop strategies to address disproportionate discipline with benchmarks, an accountability plan, and scheduled consistent times to report to the board and the community on how strategies are working or not working. Include families and youth directly affected by disproportionate discipline in the development of best practices, decision-making processes, and collective monitoring of effectiveness. And increase resources to allocate, allocated to address disproportionate discipline and implement effective practices. It's also important, and we ask that PPS support Portland Parent Union's recommendations for, for reducing school exclusions. The initiative that Kathy spoke to earlier is really around involving community and family engagement process, which culminates in a collective proposal to, and specific recommendations around potential, a potential moratorium of exclusions in PPS district. And Sheila will talk about that in further detail in a minute. We recommend to revise discipline handbooks and practices and policies, the ones that get down to the building level. Part of that, we recommend to establish that subjectively-defined behaviors like insubordination or disrespect for authority are not grounds for suspension or expulsion, considering what we know by the data is that that disproportionately impacts kids of color. Remove criminal justice language from discipline handbooks. In other words, don't criminalize child behavior. Assault and battery is not what a second-grade child does. Possibly separate a handbook for pre-K to five, to grade five, and grade six to twelve, so that it's very clear and specific that we are talking about different developmental stages in childhood. And include community with a focus on family, youth, and parents to review the revised discipline handbook before the final publication. We also think that it's paramount to support teachers and administrators with alternative practices. Provide resources to support teachers and administrators with alternatives, education such as intercultural competency and restorative justice, time and skills necessary to support students staying connected to schools and staying in their classrooms. Create incentives and accountability measures for teachers and administrators to implement new practices, and involve and listen to impacted families and youth as you are developing those alternatives. And lastly, we think it's paramount to have regular communication between community partners, including CEP, but not only CEP, and PPS policymakers. Clearly and transparently communicate these strategies and accountability plans to parents, students, and other community stakeholders directly affected by them. Provide timely discipline data, consistent, clear, and communicated to school administrators, families, and the wider community. And review the above items with CEP in quarterly meetings are our asks. Again, it is the district's responsibility to your youth and families to make disproportionate and exclusionary discipline practices an urgent and top priority. We do want to express an appreciation that we are grateful to the schools who allowed us to sit at their tables and work with them, and we also appreciate the district's support in creating those relationship. However, again, the data does not reflect adequate movement, and the stakes are too high for further delay. While overall exclusions have dropped, discipline disparities have not changed significantly. In fact, in some cases, I've used the data, they've increased particularly for African-Americans. For too many youth and families, especially those of color, bad decisions are being made which negatively impact them, not only that day, not only at that time, but for years to come. And it's the district's responsibility to youth and families to make it an urgent and And now Sheila is going to follow up with you in more detail.
Are you going to be able to provide us with that?
Yes.
It's not a PowerPoint, I know. It's called a Prezi, is that right?
Prezi.
Prezi.
Prezi, sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I have a Prezi, too.
Okay. Can we have a copy of yours, too?
Are we going to make sure that your password isn't projected to all of our viewing public? I don't know if it's hidden or not, but I don't know.
No, it's, it's not hidden.
Cover your eyes.
Close your eyes, everyone.
Everybody close their eyes.
Hang on, just, just hold on, just a second. He's coming down to help you.
Thank you for that.
There you go.
This is new, new technology for me.
Go for it.
You can go ahead.
It's turned off, the system.
I got a seat, too.
Thought I might miss the beginning of your.
Now, I'm used to a mouse. Can you see that? All right. It's in white, okay.
That's great, thank you.
I just wanted to thank you, the board, and good evening. PPU, where am I? PPU feels like we have started new relationships with the board. I think last time, I think I was pretty angry and upset, and, so, I'm in a different place, so, thank you, board. Thank you for coming to our PPU Trust Circle. We invited you when you came. The Trust Circle is an intentional way of bringing folks together to start building relationships with those that need your support the most. This is the beginning of those, where, that, my little thing is in the play, in the way. For the, let me go, I'm trying to get back out. Come and help me, I'm trying to.
You trying to get this out?
Yeah, just. This is the beginning of those critical decisions we must make together. We must be about including all stakeholders. Portland Parent Union introduced a call for a moratorium in January 2014. The campaign is called Solutions Not Suspensions by Dignity in Schools. The Dignity in Schools campaign challenges the systemic problem of pushout in our nation's schools and advocates for the human right of every child to equality education and to be treated with dignity. The DSC invites parents, youth, educators, and advocates in a campaign to promote local and national alternatives to a culture of zero tolerance, punishment, and removal. PPU has been a member since inception in 2009. What is Solutions Not Suspensions? I forgot to say the name of the campaign is Solutions Not Suspensions. Maybe I did say that. Solutions Not Suspensions is a call for a moratorium on out-of-school suspensions, and for schools to adopt more constructive disciplinary policies that benefit students' classrooms and community. To implement this moratorium, a grassroots initiative of students, educators, parents, and community leaders is calling on states and districts to support teachers and schools in dealing with discipline in positive ways, keeping most students in the classroom, and helping educators work with students and parents to create safe and engaging classrooms that protect the human rights to education and dignity. Here is our data. This is our data. Let's see if I can go back. Oops, I lost my way. All right, I wanted you guys to see this. This is our data. This is our pushout chorus. This is data with a soul. This is families who have been impacted and have told their stories over, and some of you might have heard those stories. But we call it a pushout chorus. And so, we have families telling their stories, and a couple of, this young lady with the microphone is talking about her kindergarten child. The other young lady is talking about her kindergarten child who was labeled with battery. The child was labeled with battery. So, let me go, go on. I thought I was getting good at this, but Christina, I need to go. Next one. Okay, a model code is what we came up with, the Dignity in Schools campaign folks. The Dignity in Schools campaign model code on education and dignity presents a set of recommendation policies to schools, districts, and legislators to help end school pushout and protect the human rights to education, dignity, participation, and freedom from discrimination. The code is the culmination, I've said that word a million times a day, and I knew I was going to trip up on it. The code is, is the combination of several years of research and dialogue with students, parents, educators, advocates, and researchers who came together to envision a school system that supports all children and young people in reaching their full potential. The model code is organized into five chapters: education, participation, dignity, freedom from, from discrimination, and data, monitoring, and accountability. Each, each... Each, each, here I go. Getting ahead of myself.
I think this one, I'm going to back up.
Yeah. Each of these chapters addresses a key component of providing a quality education that reflects core human rights, principles, and values. This is what the model code looks like, you have a copy. Okay, now we're getting down to the nitty-gritty. PPU's approach to moratorium recommendations is to use an inclusive process, inviting all stakeholders to the table, and that means all stakeholders. This is the Trust Circle, and some of you have already participated in that. And so the Trust Circle is, this means PPU, restorative listening dialogue. This encourages people to seek ways of moving beyond differences in a good way, to build better relationships. It is not that all circles draw out only the good in people, but circles do profoundly encourage and enable people to take the high road, to share with others in a good way. Thus, more emphasis must be given to improving the game, not winning the game and solving problems not head-to-head, but side-by-side. Circles create the spaces for disagreement without being disagreeable. Circles start with listening to most impacted families and students, that's how PPU does it. Principals and teachers, support staff being open to telling their own stories. Decision-makers and policymakers listening and acting, not reacting, gathering with listening to the most impacted along with principals, teachers, and support staff, and community relationships building intentionally. I hope that's making sense. All orgs, community working on discipline stuff directly or indirectly, knowing that they have not been impacted, but play a key role in supporting. This is a Trust Circle. We must establish trust among us to be able to make inclusive decisions. How will that look? It will take a whole village. This approach is an excellent chance to practice inclusion by building community and CEP's work has been the catalyst for change. It was the actions of CEP that ignited awareness of a pushout problem. Talk When stated this stated. This could very well be the most important civil rights issue of the 21st century. The director of PPU has been a member of CEP, representing CPPS, later Acorn, and finally PPU since 2005. The Portland Parent Union was born of the desire to give parents representation and a collective voice equal with that with what teachers have. We are a centralized group of parents and families connected to resources and supports necessary to be powerful advocates for our children and for each other, and ultimately for positive institutional changes in the greater common good. And I thank you guys for listening, and we're about loving folks up. That's what we're about. We need to change, the paradigm shift needs to be changed, and we need to start sitting down and having those conversations. Woo!
Do you want to do questions now, or you want to have both?
Do you want, do you want questions?
Ask questions, Greg?
Yeah, okay.
Board members? Questions?
Andrew? Greg?
Mine isn't really a question, I just want to say how much I appreciate, I know that this has been, six years is a long time, every one of these numbers is a student and a family, and as you pointed out, it's not about just affecting their day or their week. It can affect them their entire lives. So, I just wanted to thank you, and actually a personal shout-out, I don't know the other two folks, so I apologize, I don't mean to not sing your praises because I'm sure you're wonderful. But Sheila, you have just been steady in this work, and when you talk about loving people up, you really are changing, you do change the way you interact, and PPU interacts is about changing the way that we do this, that it's not head-to-head. When I think about the Trust Circles and the safety that it's created, it's really about creating the space to hear people's stories, because those stories are powerful and they compel us to move. So, thank you all for being here and for continuing this work with us and to continuing to engage us, even though I'm sure that it's been frustrating, because this is a really serious issue. Thank you.
So, echo everything that Greg just said. Thank you so much to Sheila and to everybody on CEP and all the folks and organizations who have been working on this for so many years or even decades with this district. Really appreciate it all, so again, in addition to sort of sending us the groovy PowerPoint, if you could also send it like in writing, like the list, I really want to make sure that we have the list of the ask, and then that we, knowing that the superintendent has made this one of her top priorities, I'm hoping, speaking for myself, that that will become one of our top priorities for the coming year. We have a retreat this summer, I'm sure I won't be alone in that, but that we need to, again, carve out the time this summer to really get clear about that and to map out what that'll be with staff. So again, I know I'm not alone in that, just want to say that though for myself. And mapping against the CEP asks, the entire list, so, and so that then we can move forward into the coming year with a specific kind of plan and roadmap for what we're going to do. I mean, I think we did, with the help of CEP and others, develop a pretty good policy back, and I believe it was 2007, 2008, but it's time for an update, a refresh, an acceleration, and expansion of that, to the extent of whether it can get into our milestones and be something that we measure, the reduction. Certainly for me, and we haven't, not to jump the gun on the staff's presentation, but the disaggregation and focus particularly on the pre-K2 hugely important, and for me at least, at the very least, that's where the moratorium needs to begin, that change needs to happen. Also, just appreciate the level of, you know, things like changing the language in our handbooks, that, again, with the capacity of staff, I know the willingness is there, but what we can do in terms of our guidance and also budget-making decisions to find the resources to be able to make change just like that, as well as obviously the expansion of restorative justice. And I know you've already begun that, we've begun that in this budget, but to get more of a focus on that and to accelerate that. And then finally, of course, teachers being a huge key piece of this, the folks, the teachers that are doing wonderful work, and how can we share and expand those best practices? The teachers who frankly are part of the problem and need more support and more accountability to change their practice. And I know we need to be able to, again, get the resources to both to accelerate and expand the great work that many teachers are doing, and also have supports and accountability for those that need to change. So, that's just a real quick perspective on and appreciation for what you're doing, and just sort of a statement that, again, I know I'm not the only one, but just wanted to make sure that I had stated personally that this is a priority for me. And while the past year has had many accomplishments and we focused on many important issues, this was one that unfortunately I think did not get as much attention, so that needs to change in the coming year. And I think the way you framed all this and the information, and just that you're here and at the table in the way that you are, I think is absolutely perfect and sets us up for success and for change in the district, so I so deeply appreciate that.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I really, I have several comments, I really appreciate it. I think it's, one of the things that we have to keep clear in this is that this data, this information that particularly around discipline doesn't exist within a vacuum. We're also seeing these same students disproportionately affected in other areas, IEPs, you know, and the list goes on. So there's, it's hard not to notice the systemic issue that we have particularly as we serve some of our most vulnerable and some of our most diverse students. So, I really appreciate the highlight to this, and I think it's a part of a, it's an important part of a larger conversation that we need to have as a system. A couple of things that I wanted to, I wanted to mention that, just reiterate things that were talked about in the presentation. One was around accountability, and I think this is, comes down to building leadership. I think it comes down to the leadership we have in front of each classroom and the other staff within that building, and where, how that staff works together and that staff, that staff creates a culture and environment within their school. We can do what we can on a policy level, and we absolutely are obligated to do that. But again, just like everything else, it comes down to how that policy translates into practice. And I think that early on in the presentation, when you're describing the results and where the policy, you know, the racial educational equity policy, things being called out specifically, how maybe there has been a little of an impact, not really where we needed to be. Couple of other words that were really, well, first before I say that, one, I think it, I think we talked about the role of the Trust Circle in this process, and I'm not familiar with the Trust Circle specifically, but I'm definitely familiar with the concept, and this is not without a precedent. Multnomah County, for example, is working with community and developing visions of how, in their work, visions of how health service can be delivered across underserved communities, and it's really creating an opportunity for that community to inform the practice, not the other way around. So, I think this is similar to what you're describing, and the community really creates a, has that voice and has that seat at the table to inform what's happening on this particular topic, but certainly I think there's a value to it in other topics as well. The last thing I'll mention is a word that is, for me, really, I think emotionally charged, and that's the word dignity. And you used it in terms of the model code. And I think that is so closely tied to the morale of our students, the morale of our parents, the relationship of our students to our educational system and their parents to our educational system. Without dignity and the freedom to feel as though they can enter an environment in a dignified way, we don't have any chance of achieving all of the things that we say we want to achieve. So I appreciate that particular call-out, and it's one that, that again, can be identified in so many other systems related to our schools, but in this particular case, there's a harm that's done when dignity is removed, and we should really be fighting like hell to keep that, keep that, and those other, those other words and phrases and messages that you had in there in that process, but that particularly touched me, so thank you for including that.
I'd just like to echo the comments the board had made. I think this is a really obvious issue for me. I mean, as a student, I see it all the time, and it's something that I think we definitely need to address, but, I mean, everyone has commented on what a complex issue it is. I mean, Director Morton mentioned that, I mean, even if we put it in policy, the implementation isn't necessarily there, and I think it's something that we, as a board, need to look at really carefully, is how can we set up a system not just based in policy, but a true systematic approach to how we can address this, because I think it reflects itself in every aspect of our work. And if we really want to see graduation rates improve, this is one of the biggest areas that we can make improvements, so.
Thank you very much for both of you being here. I really do appreciate your comments as well, and especially having a list of asks. That's always helpful as a board to hear from the community or from you exactly what it is you think we need to do. It's not always that people come with asks. We hear about issues, but never about what you think we could actually do to make a difference. I really do appreciate having that as well, so. Thank you so much. Maybe we can just get Karen to make copies, or PDF it and send it to us or something like that? So now we have the staff, is that?
Okay, so, part two of this presentation will be Sarah Singer, who is Assistant to the Chief Academic Officer, and Tammy Jackson, who is Director of Student Services, and Melissa Goff, who is Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. And I'm going to just say that much of the presentation that we just saw, which was awesome with the Prezis, by the way, like, we've been doing collaborative meetings here with CEP, with Portland Parent Union, and with staff, as we're grappling with how are we doing something that we're really maximizing the opportunity of the partnership and how, what the work is that's going on inside the district. And so, we will actually, and part of what we want to do is, number one, talk to you about the goals that we're working to set, and as you heard Kathy Gordon mention, that reducing exclusionary discipline is one of the three goals that I'm setting as a top priority for the district for the next three years. So what we've set is, number one, working to get 100% of our students reading at benchmark by the time they leave third grade, as the first one. Second one, to reduce exclusionary discipline, and we were looking at what is the specific target, but both reducing the exclusionary discipline overall and reducing the disproportionality in exclusionary discipline. And then the third one is continuing to accelerate the increase in our graduation rate. So those are the top three targets. The discussion we've been in with CEP about how do we set a target that is like a meaningful target, and then align what we're doing to actually make it happen. We're looking at a 50% reduction in overall exclusionary discipline and a 50% reduction in disproportionality in exclusionary discipline over a two-year period. And this is what, I mean, again, we're working on, is this the thing that makes sense? Looking at year one, having a 50%, 50/50 reduction in 10 to 20 target schools, so really trying to say, here are schools where we know this is a significant issue, and let's go deep and really make it happen there first, and then by year two, doing it district-wide. So that's the target that we're looking at. The second part of our conversation has been about the Portland Parent Union call for a moratorium, and our discussion here has really been, how does a moratorium make sense inside the district, and how does it contribute to reaching the goals? So would we look at early grades? Would we look at students younger than 12? Where we do, we are saying we won't do exclusionary discipline practice for students younger than 12. So there've been a couple different ways that we're doing. Would you look just at subjective practices across full K through 12? And that's one that a number of districts across the country have been doing and have had significant impact, where you are working on what are other supports and strategies for looking at behavioral change besides exclusionary discipline? So that's the conversation that we're in. And part of what we wanted to do tonight is really take you through, here is our data snapshot over the period of time we've been talking about, and then what are practices that are working that we're looking at replicating, and what are some of the partnership strategies that have been working? So, Sarah, Tammy, and Melissa, thank you.
Great, so I'm going to start by providing a snapshot or an overview of what some of our data tells us. And just before I start, a few things to note. We have recently formed a cross-functional data team to more fully support this as a district priority, and the intent of that group is to really think about how can we improve our data reporting, how the data looks, but also, perhaps most critically, processes that support the accountability of using this data to make an impact. The other point I want to make is, the data that I'm going to show you on the next several slides are five-year trend data, so that's exciting that we can go back five years and really see how we've done over time. In what I'm presenting right now, the data stops at 2012-13. In your data, in your packets, you receive more up-to-date data. The reason why we're stopping at 12-13 in this presentation is that the The reason why we're stopping at 12-13 in this presentation is that the, the current year data is not fully verified for accuracy, and if you're going to compare from year to year, you want to make sure that you're comparing apples to apples. So, I'm going to start with some positive trending, which is, if you look at the percent of students who've been excluded at least once over a five-year period, we do see a decline from 2007, at 7.1% down to 4.7%. However, the red line that I just presented there is our, our rate for our black students, which has declined over time, but you will note that there is quite a difference between our white and our black student population when it comes to who's experiencing discipline incidents, and it's about five times the rate. So, this, this particular slide's going to show percentage of students excluded at least once by school level. We start with 2007. You'll see middle, middle schools experienced the most, and as we proceed over time, you'll notice a few things. One, we do see, again, across all levels, a trending in the positive direction. You will also see that in 2012-13, that our middle schools continue to experience, our middle school students, and really that's grade six through eight, continue to experience the greatest number of, percentage of incidents.
So, Sarah, clarifying question. When you're saying elementary schools, you're including K eights in that?
Yeah, so there, this data does include, and so in that sense, elementary schools are probably inflated. The elementary schools includes elementary plus the K eights, but when we've taken a look at just the sixth, the grades six, seventh, and eighth, those grades in our K eights, we find a similar pattern. So, what the data overall is telling us is that the middle grades are the place where we find our students being affected by discipline the most.
Is there a difference between the six, seven, and eight that's in an elementary school and the middle schools? Is there a difference there?
Not much.
Not much.
Not much change. The pattern, the pattern's true. It kind of follows a bell, and historically has followed a bell, and you see that changing shape if you were to break it down by individual grades, regardless of the middle school or pre-K configuration.
I was just curious if the students in the K eights were seeing a lower level of discipline at the middle school level than the kids who are in a middle school? That's what I was looking for.
The white percentage is a little lower in sixth through eighth grade at K eights than middle school? However, the, the level of exclusion for black students is very similar.
Excellent. Great, thank you.
Okay, I forgot to do the 2012-13 bar, so it's even lower. Okay, so, the next slide shows the number of discipline incidents for disruptive behavior, and before I show you the data on this, it's, critical understand two things about this. One, this was some analysis done by the All Hands Raise Collaborative Eliminating Disparities, and secondly, they use disruptive behavior, which really includes a number of things, disorderly conduct, general harassment, insubordination, violation of school rules. In other words, these are the offenses that one might consider more subjective, more up to the individual interpretation of an adult, less maybe concrete, like other, other incidents, like fighting. So, these are, again, the more, the more subjective ones, which is something that nationally is being looked at as a key, as a key place to target. So, this is, again, by elementary school. What you see here is, is, is Parkrose is actually not even showing up here, and they don't, they have very few, if, if any, incidents, and what I have learned is that they have implemented a restorative justice program, so.
In all their elementary schools?
What was that?
In all of their elementary schools? So, as you're saying?
I don't know.
RJ in all?
RJ.
Parkrose Elementary?
No. Actually, no, we haven't done any specific work in, at the elementary level, so we're doing something else.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I'm misinforming. They're representing it as RJ, so just to say, that's how they're talking about it, yeah.
Yeah, so we learned that from them, but we can do more, more fact gathering on that one. And so, what you're going to see here is, at our high school level, we are outperforming our, our other local districts, and, and doing relatively okay in comparison on middle grades, but we all, this, I think this slide shows that we all need improvement across the entire region, that this is, this is a major regional issue. So, the way to read this is, this is our, again, this is our PPS rate of discipline, percentage of students excluded. The key here is, there's a couple of key points to note. One is, as we know, our black students are most, experience the most rate of discipline, but our native students also experience a great deal of disciplinary incidents. And this slide also breaks down, again, that disobedience and disruptive behavior one might consider a more subjective offense. It's looking, it's breaking down the rates in that way. So, that, for, for example, for the black population, 2.5% of the students who experienced an exclusionary incident, they were only, it was, it was a disobedience and disruptive behavior incident only. Average lost, number of lost instructional days per student by race. So, again, this is, I think the key point here is it's, it's, it's largely disproportionate. It is, this is an average, so keep in mind, for many students, it's significantly higher than, than a day. This is just a range. And we also know that attendance and how instructional time is a key, is a key factor in graduation rates.
So, Sarah, just to clarify, that's the average number of lost instructional days per student by race, based on suspension and expulsion days?
And so, this particular slide is, again, looking at days excluded, it's looking at total days excluded for, for our pre-K to second grade population. So, this is our four to eight-year-olds, and what this is going to show is, while this, this graph shows something that's very interesting, in that we have, somebody in our, in our previous presentations, we heard about the criminalization of some of these terms. So, battery is actually a very common offense that our four to eight-year-olds are being labeled with. This slide, I just want to point out, this slide does not do a great job of, of expressing the disproportionality. So, white students, there's five times more white students than black students, so just understand that when you look at this, yes, white students experience the greatest number, but it's nowhere close to the, the greatest percentage.
Can I ask a question about the, the top purple? It's labeled as other. Can you give me an example of what types of discipline issues those would be?
Let me see.
Is that the weapons and the?
Drugs, substance abuse.
For, for the kids.
Let's see. There's, there's forgery, extortion.
Okay.
There's some, they're random, there's a whole.
It comes up on another slide.
Theft, yeah.
Okay.
Or harassment.
So, I'm sorry, Tammy, you said, "or harassment." Harassment is broken out different than threat intimidation?
You would, I think harassment would be a separate category. Is that right?
And I would, on.
Yeah, so, so that would be in the other, in this, in this slide, which is a little different than what you saw in some of the others.
Right.
And the other thing, in your packets, I think there's a really crazy detailed chart that will, that will break out all of these.
Crazy good.
Thanks, Sean Helm, for that.
I mean, crazy helpful. It's not good.
I got a question, and it actually is about the previous slide. Do you mind backing up? I was going to wait till the end, but Greg stopped you, so I figured I would go ahead and jump on. So, average number of, I'm a little confused by this. Average number of lost instructional days per student, does this include all of the students that have not had any sort of behavioral issues?
Yes.
So, this isn't just, maybe the, a better number would be average number of lost instructional days per student who have been experienced behavior. That might give me a better idea.
I agree with that. We'll take a look at how we present this.
Yeah, because that may be a little deceiving.
Yep. I think the key point here is that, I mean, the disproportionality is, is readily apparent.
Which addresses access issues.
Okay, so, the data team created some key findings. There's follows, exclusionary incidents have been decreasing since 2007, especially at the high school level. African-American students, followed by native students, experienced the greatest percentage of exclusionary incidents. Exclusionary incidents have been decreasing for African-American students since 2007. However, and this is a huge, however, the relative rate of exclusionary incidents between African-American and white students has not improved over time. And middle grades is where PPS students experienced the greatest number of exclusionary incidents. And the next steps for data analysis and reporting is, we are going to conduct analysis on discipline to identify some of our better performing, higher performing schools as it relates to, to discipline, and then lowest performing schools using an index of various measurements. We're going to work with our exclusionary discipline committee to determine criteria for identifying who will be our target schools that align with the goals that Superintendent Smith outlined, and then we're looking at developing standard reporting formats and reporting intervals, because we believe that will be a key to accountability.
So, I get to talk to you a little bit about what's working in terms of our high-leverage strategies. In your packets, you received a slightly longer list than the items I'm going to talk about here tonight, but the first strategy that we're going to address is culturally responsive PBIS. And culturally responsive PBIS, next slide, is a framework, if you will, an organizing framework that engages, that we use to look at a multi-tiered system of support that engages students, family, and staff in aligning resources and supports in a positive way for students. It fundamentally sits on the following beliefs, that students need to know what's expected of them, that they need to be directly taught the behaviors that are expected, the positive behaviors, and that behavior needs to be, positive behavior needs to be supported and encouraged and acknowledged, and that supports need to be provided to enable school success so that it isn't a random luck of the draw, if you will. So, does it work? Sure.
PBIS, I recently read the material on our website.
Yes.
They talk about learning labs as the, as a critical, huge critical part of PBIS? Do we have even one school that follows through with the learning labs as the huge critical part of PBIS?
So, it, a lab from the sense that we have strong implementers of PBIS that, that for, so when I talk about these high-leverage strategies that we're using, and we use this PBIS framework for our strategies, we're looking for a layering on of effective best practices and systems in order to demonstrate the kind of successful outcomes that we would want all of our schools to have. So, from that sense of the word, yes, we do have those schools.
But, trying to be as polite as I can here, it doesn't sound like there's a learning lab strategy that they talk about in PBIS, which includes everybody in the school and the community, all coming together, surrounding and setting up systems that change the culture of the school.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any schools that have all those community people within their school attendance area coming together?
Yes.
Which school would that be that I could go look at?
So, we're just completing our school assessment data right now, and so the schools that are participating, and we identify on this slide as high implementers or low implementers, these are schools that participate in a school-wide assessment process. So, they use data to drive their decisions and to monitor their progress and about how well they're implementing this framework. So, that's what this slide represents, and as the schools that have just now completed their assessment process, I will list to you the strongest schools.
But that, that's not the question that I'm asking.
Well, but I think it is. I think, I think what you're saying is, who are the schools that are the strongest implementers?
No, it's not what I'm saying.
That have the community coming together and that the school-wide consensus that they're doing the work for?
That's really not what I'm asking.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm asking if they, if there's a setup structure similar to the information that's put out in PBIS about the learning lab structure. That means you've got, you've almost dumped all the other committees in the school, which is what PBS suggests that you do, dumps everything out, and the, the community and the teachers, the children, and everybody comes together to work on the culture of the community, and you pretty much dumped everything out.
Yes, sir.
So, do we, has anybody done that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I, I won't say that they've dumped everything out, but I will say braided, braided their work or are in the process of doing that, and that would be Robert Gray, Markham, Vernon, Vestal, Whitman, and Woodmere. Those are our strong implementing schools for this academic year.
Vestal and Woodmere? Did I miss one? Robert Gray, Markham, Vernon, Vestal, Woodmere, and Whitman?
Yes, and I would be very happy to arrange any time, a conversation if you need that.
Thank you for your help. Appreciate it.
So, this slide that you're looking at right now looks at suspension and expulsion rates and comparing these two levels of implementation. So, bear in mind, all these schools that are participating in this work are, in fact, making some strides towards implementation. Implementation of PBIS is thought to be a three to five-year process, so we have people earlier in this process than others. So, the higher implementers, you'll see a, a more sharp decline in the rate of exclusion. In the next slide, we begin to show you looking by race. So, for white students, you see a 3.4% decline in the rate of exclusion. In the next slide, you'll see, for our black students, you also see a decline, not at the same rate, but you do see a decline by race when, that's sharper than, for example, a low implementer, which in fact you see an uptick for. This would suggest to us that they're getting some of their systems in place, they're getting school-wide rules and expectations, but maybe they are not teaching those expectations in a culturally relevant and responsive way that's getting us the kind of gains that we would hope to get over time. I was just sitting here looking at data also, this is from last year's data, I was looking at a little bit of the preliminary work on this year's data, and where leadership is strongest, we see even sharper declines in the rate of the higher implementers, just to make a note. Restorative justice, also another effective strategy, as you know, that you have helped us expand in the upcoming year. It's a, an alternative discipline practice that is emerging to assist with particularly addressing disproportionate rates of exclusionary practices. It uses a variety of proactive processes that include restorative inquiry, mediation, conferencing, dialogues, et cetera, the kinds of things that you heard Christina and Sheila talk about a short time ago. There are three fundamental underpinnings that include understanding the impact of a person's behavior and repairing the harm done, engaging in community and family involvement, and empowering all who are involved. We have two schools currently implementing restorative justice, and those are Rigler and Grant. Rigler's been implementing for the past three years and is moving now into a sustainability track, so we will be adjusting their level of support. Grant is implementing for the past two years. We are expanding next year to the schools you see listed below, which are Oakley Green, Chief Joe, Madison, Beaumont, Boise, LA. Chief Joe, Madison, Beaumont, Boys Elliott Humboldt, and George. Centralized hearings is also another practice that, or another shift that we've made this year. So we've moved from a hearing, an expulsion hearings process in schools that was done by the school principals in their buildings to a centralized process where we have a cadre of administrators who, that go out to schools who are unknown to the schools up until the time of their hearing. And as a result of that process, as of the 20th of this month, we had completed 161 hearings and 29 of those had resulted in expulsion. This represents about, I'm guessing it's going to be about a 50% reduction from expulsions from what we had a year ago. Yours, not, yes.
How do you decide who goes, who has a hearing and who doesn't?
That's, so the process to a hearing is that the student has reportedly violated some, some school rule. It's the school's job to investigate and determine that they believe that it might meet an expellable level. The requirement of a school in order to even go through an expulsion hearing process is they must talk to their regional administrator or myself to gain approval to move to a hearing. If there is some other support, strategies, or interventions that are readily seen by the, either the regional administrator or myself by adding in more resources and supports, we do so, so they don't make it to a hearing. If it's believed that, that in fact the behavior reaches the magnitude that it, it does need to go to a hearing, sometimes that's by the level of infraction in and of itself that it absolutely is required to go to a hearing, then they, the school is granted permission to schedule that hearing. And my office coordinates that process to get a hearings officer there.
So what, what percentage of, of, what, how do you figure out if you have, if you have hearings that have to take place under the guidelines?
Right, so for example, if there's.
What proportion of the, of the total hearings would that be, would you guess?
So Portland has very few zero tolerance policies. So the federal and state requirements around weapons automatically would go to hearings. So what, for, to make it, how I listen to those conversations is to make sure that's what be, what is being described to me fits the definition of a mandated exclusionary event. So in the case of weapons, in the case of some drug violations and alcohol violations, in the case of assault and battery of staff, which you've seen and we've talked a little about.
So a certain number of those, 161 are mandated, must go to hearings by the state or, and also our policy, or by the state and not our policies, or by?
Very few of those are, what I know about these hearings is that very few of these hearings are either federal or state requirements, although there are some of them in there.
And some of them are hearings required by our own policies?
That's correct.
What percentage of the hearings, how do we decide if something goes to a hearing but it's not required that it goes to a hearing? Is that, somebody takes a shot?
I don't know percent. I could, I could look at that.
Well, I mean, how would we decide, how would we decide that?
How would, so let me make sure I understand your question. So how would we decide whether or not something would go to a hearing?
It, that's not mandated to go to a hearing. Because that's, you've got some flex in there, obviously. How do we deal with the flex? That's what I'm interested in.
So, that's a great question.
Thank you.
So, either by the egregiousness of the behavior itself, or by the, the failed attempts at intervention and support.
But basically, somebody's, somebody's gonna, I.
That's what I would give you for an extremely short answer.
Somebody's going to eyeball that.
Somebody is going to listen to this story and.
And say, hmm, maybe this takes a hearing. This kid's had enough.
This takes a hearing because I need more of the story. So often what happens when I get those calls, so just to make it about a story, is when I get those calls, I'm going to hear a very fine point in time. I'm going to hear that somebody hit somebody. Say that that's what I hear. I'm, I have a whole lot of question about somebody hit somebody. I want to know what happened right before that. I want to know what happened before that. I want a bigger picture about what happened. What was the, the antecedent, if you will, or the thing that comes before the behavior? That's going to help me know what options and opportunities exist in order to support that child beyond something like an exclusionary practice.
Okay.
If I can't get at all that information because it's not readily available at the time, then I'm going to say, we need to take this to a hearing because it feels egregious to me at that time, so that the school has the opportunity to complete their investigation. And that's why you see the distance between 161 hearings and 29 expulsions. So what happens is that schools are doing a whole lot of work and bringing a bunch of information together that they present to the hearings officer at the time of the hearing. It's not only about that incident in and of itself, but about the student and their, their strengths and challenges and supports that they've received. Is that helpful?
Thank you.
That's the last slide.
Thank you very much. Questions from board members? Bobby?
I was particularly interested in the fact that we seem to have so many instances at the middle school grades as opposed to high school or elementary. And do we have any specific strategy for those particular grades or for those kids? Or any explanations?
So one of the things that we're seeing an incredibly strong interest in is restorative practices. We've begun a little bit of professional development, and I'm extremely excited to see more of that work happen in the upcoming year. That's something that's of real strong interest to particularly our middle schools. We also see promise in, I mentioned Robert Gray as one of our strong implementers of PBIS. So that's another strategy. So you see these strategies. We're also, we, we are also working on a project in Roosevelt Cluster to make sure that we have culturally specific and culturally responsive supports available to our students and families in middle grades.
Good. Thank you. Other questions?
If we eliminated suspension, it's pretty much automatic suspension for fighting in our schools?
Not necessarily.
But I mean, we've got a tremendously large, we've got this little sheet, sheet here.
Mm-hmm.
It's got a lot of fighting stuff on it.
Yep.
Mutually agree. And aren't these suspensions, numbers of suspensions for kids? Is that what this?
Number of exclusions, yes.
Exclusions, exclusion.
Means suspension or expulsion. So those are all together.
Right, okay, so, so there is quite a few for fighting.
Yes.
If we'd eliminate suspensions for fighting, like they used to do in the old days, that 'd take care of, what, 20% of our exclusions maybe, or more than that, it's a huge number.
It would, and that's part of what we anticipate.
And the second thing is, the second, the second thing is, we also have exclusions for absentees.
Yes, we do.
So if we eliminated all the exclusions for absentees, I mean, and you're absent kid, and so we're sending you home tomorrow. Doesn't make a lot of sense, of course, but if we did that, that'd be a big chunk of.
It would be.
So, okay. Just something that I think would be nice to look at.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, my other question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
My other question is, how, how, as we're working on, beginning to work on this, really, in a way, it's probably a question for the superintendent more than, but I don't know. How are we involving the teachers association and the, the union for the EA people in this work? Because you, there's several parts to this work around it, of course, and part of it is you have, is coming up with alternative methods that keep children in classrooms as opposed to sending them home or whatever, expelling them. So, and that would, and, and that, that work comes really, I mean, the people who, who deal with that really are the classroom teachers who have the most sense of how that works. If two kids in my classroom, when I was an old teacher, got in a fight, that didn't bother me so much, but if one of them told me no, that bothered me a lot because that affected my, the classroom different than the fight. The fight's done, over with, and, and so you go on with your class. But the kid telling you no creates this other atmosphere. And so it would seem to me that we really need to have teachers heavily involved in this to.
I agree.
To get the balance.
Yeah, we agree. I mean, and there's, there are different aspects of this that teachers need to be really involved in. Some of it is the looking at our policies. And when we were just talking about, our policy handbook doesn't line up with the actual, I mean, our student handbook doesn't line up with our policy, so that disconnect. There's a, there's a bunch of work to be done there that we will do in collaboration with our teachers' union. And, and as you say, like the ability to have different strategies and supports. So if we're saying, you need to have a broader set of responses.
What do you do? Yeah, exactly.
Yes, there's a, there's a lot of work that will be.
And I was on the board when they wrote that book, actually.